Welcome to the school committee meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. I'm going to begin with the art that is throughout the room today. And Karen said, "I don't have to pay attention to the boards, I can just read." So, maybe that's just like a special plan for me. The Dallin Elementary School is piloting a TAB approach this year with grades one through five. TAB is Teaching for Artistic Behavior. Very cool. Teaching for artistic behavior is an approach that treats children as artists and gives students the skills to make meaningful art independently. So, all around the room is the art from this project. Students are encouraged to work with their strengths and explore the materials and techniques that are the most appealing to them. Students share out at the end of every art class. They ask each other questions, make suggestions, give compliments, and learn from each other. Students have recently learned how to map their own artwork, write artistic statements, and answer a call for art to have their work in the show. They are learning to curate and hang art shows as well. Each bulletin board in the school committee room this evening represents the work of one grade and showcases a variety of art forms. Represented are not only the art forms of drawing, painting, and collage, but also printmaking, embroidery, origami, sewing, weaving, and digital art. The choice-based learning that works with TAB provides opportunities for students to develop 21st century skills such as problem-solving, innovation, collaboration, communication, inquiry, initiative, leadership, and cross-cultural skills. So, congratulations to the students and the staff at the Dallin for this great project. And when you get a moment, just walk around the room and take a look at it. We now have public participation. Is anybody here for public participation?
We're not even from Arlington.
Yeah, so I'm in a journalism class.
Oh.
And so I have to...
You're covering us, huh?
Yeah.
All right, good luck with that. All right, okay, well, we'll try to do our best. All right, so, there's no public participation, but as a student here from a journalism class, where are you from?
Medford.
Medford, all right, good. Great, welcome. And we're going to have a presentation by Dr. Jenger, but he's not quite here yet.
He's here, he's on his way.
All right, so...
We got the educational plan?
He's here, not here.
Yeah, well, we're not going to go to the budget, we don't want to talk about the budget yet. John, you want to give a financial report? Can I do that?
Sure.
Without objection?
Fine.
Sure.
All right, go ahead. Just go ahead, go ahead, John.
The financial report was for the last meeting that I couldn't make it to. And it's through the end of January. And, you know, the important things are that the general fund balance is just over eighty-five thousand dollars. That might seem like a big change from the month before. You know, it's about half of what it was the month before, a little less than half it was the month before, but that's because we're trying to do... Our plan was to be able to start trying to project what the ending balance is going to be after the report you'll get at the next meeting, which would be through the end of February, but we did a little bit of that for this month, too. And we're able to, as we get further and further, we're either able to get tighter and tighter on some of the personnel pieces with leaves, inactive, encumbrances, and payroll, and because people are just spending more, you know, spending their budget more and more. In the grants revolving accounts, same report as last month, it's being... they're being spent as expected, and there's been no changes. And the all-in combined report just takes into account all three of the separate reports into one total all-in number, which is just under seventy thousand dollars. So, again, it is a change from last month. You expect to see something similar again in the next report, a bigger change than you've been used to, but that's because we're going to... we're going over the spending patterns for the same time last year and trying to project that way to, you know, as we're asked, to try to get as close as we can to what we think the number's going to be. At this point, we don't... we still don't think the number would be in a deficit at all, which is the important thing, but I know if it's... we wouldn't want to have a big surplus either, a surprise surplus either. We'd want to be able to plan for that if it was going to be.
Go ahead, Bill.
Just a couple of questions. Line eighty-one, three oh two, it's custodian snow and ice removal. Are we in a bigger hole than what this is showing right now?
Yes, sir. It'll be even bigger.
I just assumed that, okay. Eighty-one, three oh seven, it says permit. That's all. There was no budget for it, now it says ten thousand.
Yeah, it's one bill, and I have it. I'm going to have to get back to you exactly what it is, but it's...
Okay, I just assumed because we're a town who...
Yeah, it's not us paying for a permit. It's not us paying a permit fee.
Okay, thank you. And my last one, a combination, eighty-one, four, thirteen, and fourteen, they're on longevity. I'm excited to see the surplus under the teacher one, twenty-eight thousand, and the administration one. I'm just... I can assume that we got a surplus because people that we thought were going to be paying for it didn't stay or whatever, they didn't get... they didn't reach the next tier.
That's part of it.
Okay.
And I think part of it is just that it was in... some of them were in the wrong buckets.
Okay.
So, I think in what we did is kind of took an aggregate to make sure we were going to have enough, and then for what we have for next year, they're in the proper spots with the proper people.
And is that what...
And part of it could be a timing.
Is that what happened in the admin to get the deficit?
Yes. Yeah, it's just...
So, next year, those figures should be... the worst-case scenario was, would be that we have more...
Correct.
...by people not coming back or something like that.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Two questions. I was wondering why our electricity is running higher than projected, and I'm wondering, is that what you're saying? You looked at last year and you're projecting for...
So, electricity on here, you'll notice, is a round number, and it's offset by gas. It's because we've charged part of that to the revolving account. So, we have an adjusting entry for this month to fully expend in the operating budget, and then we'll see on the revolving account piece what we're thinking we're going to be at the bottom line for at the end of the year.
Okay.
So, part of it is, it was sort of a plug to make them offset exactly in the operating budget, so it wouldn't artificially increase a deficit or a surplus. But in the all-in piece, they should be factored in, and we'll tighten that up for the next... this report from February.
Okay, so it's not... it's more accounting than actual costs, I mean, actual rise in actual cost?
Right, because right now, it's the actuals and then a projected, that's just a plug figure for the whole amount.
Okay.
But for this next one, we'll try to use what we have for actuals from that period of last year, add that on to what we have for actuals for now...
Okay.
...and project where we're going to be.
And then, I was wondering why the grants have such large funds that aren't yet allocated?
For revenues?
Yeah, for the... yeah, the grant... sorry, I'm having a hard time finding what I'm talking about. The grant...
So, I could just say for both, I made an answer before you, so you don't have to... but for the revenue piece of it, it's a timing issue, because we request the drawdowns after we spend the money in a month, and then those may not actually get posted to our revenue until the following month. So, in some cases, you could be two months behind. By the time you get a report, you can be two months behind on revenue actually being booked, but it is requested the month after we spend it, the way... well, the month that you actually spend it. And on the expense piece, a lot of it has to do with timing of when we're spending this stuff. A lot of it is professional development and happens towards the end of the year and over the summer for two A and Title One, and that's pretty...
Okay. It was... it's kind of all through the grant report, I'm looking at the projected to completion, and it's up by almost five hundred thousand. And I was just wondering, so we just haven't booked expenses against those yet?
Correct. So, the projected to completion for grants, because in the past months, those were inflating what we said our unencumbered balance was in our all-in report, to make us seem like we had an unencumbered balance of five hundred thousand dollars, because we weren't projecting the grants to be spent out. So, what we did in grants revolving was just project them to be spent in full by the end of the year, so that it wouldn't artificially inflate the...
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, now I understand, thank you.
So, actually, I have a question about the power, which I know you sort of answered, but I'm still confused, I just want to ask you a question. So, when we thought, okay, what is our... so, electricity, say, eight-two, one-oh-three, what is our electricity usage projected to be? Did we say, oh, I think it's going to be eight hundred thousand, we're going to book six hundred thousand to the original appropriation, and two hundred to the revolving fund? Is that what we did?
Yes.
That's what I need to know. Okay, thanks. Yeah, that's all.
Any other questions for John? Okay, thank you. We could do the legal issue, do you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we do that?
The snow issue.
Oh, the snow issue.
What was that?
The superintendent's report.
Get the legal one, get the legal one out of the way, it's a little one.
Yeah, we'll do the legal, it's fast. This bill, okay, so, we, you know, we have a motion, we have... we need a motion to change our representation for labor and employment to Valerio, Domenello, and Hillman.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hayner, second by Mr. Schlickman. Any discussion on the motion?
Can we just make it clear for our audiences, we're moving...
Yeah.
We're changing firms, because the current firm we're using is dissolving, and the principals are moving to this new firm, and we want to stick with them, so we're going... that's why the change is happening.
Yes, right, thank you for that. Yeah, I should probably frame it that way, I'm sorry, Jim. Yeah, Len?
Just, I should know this, but we don't have a retainer with this firm, right?
No.
Only our...
Yes.
Any other discussion?
On... Yes, the effective date is April first of the...
Okay.
Just, I don't know if you wanted to say that.
Okay, the effective date is April first.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want... do we need a separate motion to authorize you to sign for us?
I'm assuming that it's in...
There's two letters for the signature.
So, why don't we pass... why don't we make the motion first, then make a second motion authorizing the sign. So, motion to move to a new law firm with the same principles from our former firm, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, then a motion to direct the chair, Bill?
To move to direct the chair to sign that agreement, I mean, the change.
Any discussion on Bill's motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Okay.
We need a motion to maintain the fees. There's a second letter, there's two letters.
Bill, you are the best, you are.
I'll read my paper.
Can I?
Move to authorize the... move to authorize the chair to sign the letter maintaining the current fees of two-twenty-five an hour for lawyers and ninety-five dollars for paralegals.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Bill's motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, thanks for all your prep on that one. Okay, now we go back to the agenda, and we're going to turn over to Dr. Jenger. And if you have a microphone over there, he does not.
Karen, Karen, you think you have your microphone here?
No, no, don't. So, first of all, maybe you could begin with a little summary of today's walkout.
Can I start with yesterday's walkout? So, the plan originally, actually, was...
Yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday was supposed to be our high school inclusion day, and the walkout was going to be part of that day, just because it fell on the day and was accommodated into the middle of it. So, I do want to give a shout-out to the students and all the folks who put a ton of work into preparing that. We had about thirty student workshop planned, over a hundred student presenters, we had about ten outside workshops, and then two sets of outside speakers planned for the day's events. Unfortunately, the snow decided we should stay at home, so we're going to find a way to sprinkle those events throughout the rest of the year, given the MCAS and the APs, and then the senior departure, I think doing it the way we had planned. This was just about our last day to do it. So, inclusion day passed, but the students in charge of the walkout decided that pie would happen today, so we rounded the wrong way, and instead of three-point-one-four, then three-fifteen, the students did the walkout. Our walkout at Arlington High School was sponsored by our student council. The students have been doing a really great job of communicating with all the student body, as well as the press, and so at about ten o'clock, as the classes shifted over, I don't... I'm not a good crowd estimator, but somewhere between three and four hundred students walked out, and we had about five speakers, and then a group of folks that did a group conversation, and they gave very thoughtful presentations on what they were interested and why they were interested in, and how they asked for students to become involved civically. Students, the Arlington Police did a great job of making sure that everyone was secure out there on the front lawn, and then we went right on back to class by about three-twenty. They ran right on schedule. We were extremely proud of the students for really wanting to take action, and I hope that as they learn from this opportunity to take civic action and have conversations where they educate themselves on what is their doing, that this is a turning point in terms of their own leadership. We've been working over the last five years to develop student leaders, and one of the things I said to them five years ago was that the day I'd know they had arrived was when they came up with a plan that was well-thought-out, reasonable, and a little bit of a pain for the administration. That was when I know that they had arrived, student leaders, and this was a perfect example of that, because it did disrupt our day a little bit, but it was something we were able to work with, and that's, I think, the best part of that kind of partnership. So, that's where we are on that.
Terrific, thank you, appreciate it.
Which presentation am I giving first?
I think you're giving the education plan first.
Right. So, there is no presentation for the educational plan, other than the sixty-page document that you have. I think we crept up from... we were up around fifty, forty-five, I think, when I gave it to you last time. Some folks had given me very specific edits. I'm not sure if all of your specific edits have made them in there. We will do another sweep-through to make sure that if you caught the passive voice and we didn't catch it on our read-through, we get rid of it. Thank you to all of you, and the comments about the Oxford comma, I felt very, very, very closely. But the main thing that we did as we went through was to really shift the structure to make sure that in every section, we were really clear about what we were asking to in terms of... what we were asking for in terms of the future configuration, and then where we were going in terms of the adjacencies. I added a section based on the recommendation, trying to give an overview, a little bit more detail of how, if you run through all, what is next to what, that design creates the big picture, which is in the adjacency diagram. And then added sections for a number of groups that are, you know, in the building and connected to the school, the lab, community education. We talked a little bit about the use of outdoor spaces, because that runs through in terms of our thinking about both science, classroom spaces, and social-emotional learning, to have good outdoor spaces, and that's in the current plan as well. So, that's some of the details we put in there. And then, I did some research, and I know there were groups that went out and did research specifically on the performing arts spaces, the PE spaces, and the library spaces. So, I will wave a sheet of paper, no, I don't have it here, but if you ask your librarian to give you an estimate with some nice scales and rubrics on how one should decide the size of a library, you can guess that you will get a page with six different approaches to estimating the appropriate size of the library with citations. So, that came up with a somewhat larger library central area. We did it based on the standards from a few different places, standards based on recommendations of the library committee folks. And then, the one that I tried to use most in the writing was one based on the various uses. If we wanted to be able to accommodate this many students and this many classes and this many groups, at the same time, how many square foot would you need? And that upped the numbers from about ten thousand eight hundred square feet total to about twelve hundred, eight hundred twelve, about two thousand more square feet, because if we really want that central part of the library to be able to accommodate larger groups and still run all of the various different activities we want, we do need a bigger central space, so that was one of the recommendations. In the PE group, looked at the different configurations of the library, of the... I'm sorry, of the gym, and the different configurations of the fitness space and the alternative PE space. And that was a challenging one, because my understanding is that I think a lot of us have a dream of a large fieldhouse that would really capture all of the spaces we have now and increase the functionality, and it really just doesn't look like the MSBA allows for that. I'll defer to the school committee in terms of what you all feel like it is appropriate to ask strategically of the MSBA, but they really will not let us have a larger than a hundred and... I'm going to get my thousands wrong. Sixteen thousand, there you go, too many zeros. Sixteen thousand square-foot gym. And so, in our goal, which is to be able to have four teaching spaces, minimum during the day, a sixteen thousand square-foot gym is one we could divide in half, potentially into thirds. The fitness room would be a second space, and then the alternative PE space would be a third space. Folks looked at a lot of different configurations, that if you divided the gym into thirds, it would be less useful or less... it would be less effective as the current sort of gathering space for the whole school, less effective in terms of losing the indoor jogging track. One of the things we clarified was the language of jogging track versus running track. It is not technically a running track, because a running track would be one we could hold running meets on, and so that would be a larger track with banked turns where students would run at full speed. It is, however, a track that is traditionally and commonly used as a jogging track. Students do do training on it, they don't just walk. In fact, JV runs meets on a twelve-lap-per-mile track some of the time, so it's not a track we wouldn't be able to use. The trade-off would be, I think, a lot of the question has been around where we could put the gymnastics floor. The gymnastics floor, I'm going to get it wrong, but I think it's thirty-nine by thirty-nine. And so, in order to have that space and to be able to run those sorts of activities, if we were going to, we have to leave that mat, the apparatus, the floor, down. We can't take that up and put it down again, the way we do with wrestling mats. If you're going in the winter to be able to have wrestling mat, the gymnastics floor down, and basketball, running at the same time, you'd need a gym that was longer, so you had three courts side by side. To be honest, that specific configuration question is one we don't actually have to decide right now. What we'd be still asking for is a sixteen thousand square-foot gym. I described it in the write-up as a gym that has got a track around it still with the two separations in order to get the PE spaces. If in the future, we decide to take that same square footage and reconfigure it, that's not really going to affect the MSBA's decisions around what we have. I do know that right now, our gymnastics team actually practices at Arlington two days a week, and a lot of the local gyms and programs actually practice at local gyms the way we do the other days of the week. So, I think we can look over the next year or so as we figure out the final plan to see how we want to accommodate those programs. We looked at the fitness room being three thousand square feet, it's currently four thousand square feet, and the proposal that I wrote in there was to actually have the four thousand square-foot room be the alt PE, which is a little larger than the MSBA generally wants, but would make it more useful for gymn... not for... well, you could, in fact, put the gymnastics floor in there, but more likely for wrestling, rock climbing, and the climbing activities we do, and then the various other PE sports we have. So, one would imagine doing yoga, dance, and other things in that space. There is requested in there a fifth PE space, or a... that would be usable, which is the alt PE space under special education. Right now, our special education program uses the pit and sometimes the blue gym for a lot of different activities. We have at least five different programs, we would imagine using that, and so we really, if we're going to continue to have the four PE spaces for PE, we would need that fifth space for special education programming. And then, last but not least, is the performing arts. I will admit that actually, I spent the afternoon pacing off the floors and just walking around, making sure we got those spaces right. I appreciate the work of a number of folks who are very interested in the PE, in the performing arts, who really looked through different facilities to see what it is we should do. Their specific issues were around the size of the bandroom, the chorus room, the size of the stage, and the seating capacity of the theater. So, in no particular order. Our current bandroom is around fifteen hundred square feet, our current chorus room is around thirteen hundred square feet. If one looks at different recommendations, they range from three thousand to two thousand square feet in terms of size. The recommendation of the group, I believe, was to have a bandroom of twenty-five hundred square feet and a chorus room of twenty-five hundred square feet. I think clearly both of those spaces could be bigger than the fifteen hundred square feet currently in the plan. If you actually... if you go into our current bandroom, it is about fifteen hundred square feet, and it's really pretty tight. And our band is currently, the largest ensemble is a hundred and fifteen, that's the orchestra. If you added thirty percent to that with enrollment, we'd be at a hundred and fifty. It's possible that when we got that big, we might divide into two ensembles, but then being able to have a hundred and fifty kids comfortably in that room would be, I think, really important to the growth of the program. So, then, moving on to the theater. Mr. Burns' comment to the thousand-foot auditorium was, I really don't think a thousand-seat auditorium. He was happy with nine hundred seats, given, you know, the size of the house that that would be, but I think a nine hundred-seat auditorium makes a lot of sense. Our current auditorium square feet would be a five hundred and fifty-seat auditorium, to get an idea of how large the auditorium would be if you have nine hundred seats. It will be a significantly larger space, and there are ways in which they can make that more intimate and make that something you can close in for smaller shows. The stage size, our current stage is about twenty-one hundred square feet, the MSBA's stage size is around sixteen hundred square feet. Again, I was in there today, I can't really imagine having a smaller stage. Right now, we cannot fit our ensembles all on there. The... when they're doing, what were the big ones they did? The Beethoven's Ninth or Bohemian Rhapsody, and you have the chorus and the orchestra and the band and everybody on stage, there's two hundred and fifty kids spilling out into the audience. So, what we're proposing is the same-sized stage we currently have, and then one of the recommendations of HMFH is to have five hundred-foot extensions, so the first few rows of seats can actually be removed, and then these extensions will come up, and those extensions then allow you to have much larger ensembles. And so, for a lot of purposes and a lot of flexibility in the stage, that's a really nice option. And actually, you can then take one of those out entirely, if you choose to do so, which creates a three-foot hole in the floor, which approximates a pit. The MSBA doesn't sponsor pits, but they will let us build extensions into the space. As long as you get everyone's head down below where you can see, that works pretty well. I think those were all of the big details, I can't remember if there were others that you had particular questions about.
Black box theater.
What's what?
Black box theater.
Black box.
Oh, the theater size. So, the theater size that they requested is a three thousand square-foot little theater, as they're calling it.
Black box, yeah.
We would probably design it as a black box space. There are little theaters in schools and other places ranging from about two thousand square feet to about three thousand square feet. The Province Sound Theater is two thousand square feet, seats about ninety students, or they say it has ninety seats. How many seats you have depends on how big the stage you want in a black box, you can take them out and put them out, that's the whole point. The theater in Billrica is a three thousand square-foot little theater, the Whitney Theater at Yale is a three thousand square-foot theater, and those are very flexible and useful for a lot of things. So, we've put in for a three thousand square-foot theater, I'd love to get one. I spoke to Michael, and he was like, "I would love a three thousand square-foot theater." He was... didn't want the hundred extra seats in the auditorium, but he would absolutely like the thousand extra feet in the theater. And so, I guess those are really decisions for the building committee and the school committee to make in terms of priorities.
I'll open it up for questions. So, tonight, our responsibility is to ask questions and vote on this. And just the fieldhouse issue, so we did some research with the MSBA, and our owner's project manager spoke to the MSBA. The fieldhouse has to be a separate project from this project, it's almost like the pool in terms of the regulations, so that's how that would work. All right, so I'll open up for questions, Bill.
The... go back to the gym. The size of the gym, when you talked about the track, does that... you see the track above or below?
No, so the current gym is about twelve thousand square feet.
Right.
The options we would have would be to hang a jogging track above...
Okay.
...or to put it around. If you hung it above, we'd still have a twelve thousand square-foot gym with a four thousand square-foot running... jogging track.
So the, the track is included in the sixteen thousand?
The track is included, but that gives you a larger gym, which allows us then to seat more people.
Right.
To have more space. I mean, right now, we don't have a lot of run out on our basketball court. It's very difficult to move people around and so it makes it less usable.
Does that have to be put in this, decide whether it's on the floor or up above at this time?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I've written the description of it on the floor. Putting it on the floor gives you larger spaces in terms of the two basketball courts. But that is going to be sixteen thousand square feet as far as the MSBA is concerned either way.
One of the other questions, and it's not relative to the, the building project, but going forward for the future, the theater itself, to rent it out, is that something that's being thought about?
Well, my understanding is that the MSBA really doesn't want to hear us thinking about rental revenues. They're interested in the educational.
Never said it. Thank you.
Yeah, by the way, that's, thank you. I mean, everything, everything that we're doing with the MSBA is.
For the education of the kids.
Why is it necessary for the education of the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen hundred, two thousand students we're gonna have in that school? Who had, Len?
Yeah. So thank you for all the changes and improvements. It looks really good. I guess for Jeff and Kirsty, sort of a process complication is, my understanding is that we have to provide, we have to approve, our role is to approve the educational plan. We're not necessarily the ones who decide whether we request a sixteen thousand square foot gym or an eighteen thousand square foot gym. So I, maybe in the motion, we can just give some flexibility. Should the building committee, for example, decide to go for an eighteen thousand square foot gym, we don't have to come back and change the plan because it says sixteen thousand in here. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right. I don't think we have to come back here, no. I mean, I think the educational plan that we're adopting this evening is the plan for the school. It's a guideline. It's kind of the, it's the framework for the project. It's the framework for the work that the design team's.
Right, right. And I've seen other versions that don't have this level of detail as to square footage, which would remove the problem. But since it's in here, I just want to be clear that it's okay to then change that and not have to come back for our approval. Although there probably will be time for approval if we need to.
I think it'd be time for approval if we need to. I mean, we have a building committee with lots of different views and so we made it specific.
Yep. Okay. Great. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep.
So I assume that there's small little changes that we made. You know, there's still some small errors, but not, but it's drastically better. But we can still approve what is the fundamental.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, I mean, if it's, if it's a major structural change that you see, we should talk about it. But if it's, you know, this paragraph doesn't make sense or there's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then I think just send those changes to Matt.
Yeah, the, I mean, so I want to commend you on your hard work. I think this is a good document. And I, and I really appreciate how consistent the language is between the departments. So that, you know, you say, you know, here's what we have, here's what we need, you know, it's very clear what's going on. What I especially like, which is only in some of them, and it might be too difficult to get in the other ones, is where you explain how we're asking for more or potentially less than what we currently have. And I think that's really was, it's very helpful. It's only in some of them. It might, again, it might just be too hard to get in for every single department. But it was really helpful, I thought.
I tried, I mean, going with what Len said, a lot, like a lot of these plans don't mention numbers at all.
Right, right.
And I think the building committee and the school committee and I agree, wanted particularly where we were asking for a difference.
Yeah.
To make an argument as to why we were asking for a difference. Otherwise, you can look at the table and it says, there's two columns and you can see that the number is the same.
Okay.
So I think it would just make it a lot longer.
Okay, so, okay. I didn't, I didn't compare the columns. So, so when it's, when you're not sort of specifying it, it's because it's essentially what they provide.
Right.
Okay. All right, great. That's helpful.
That's an important point because in this building committee, the specificity often came because people said we should, it was a, you know, the word grandfather that was used, like for example, the size of the stage. You know, we're used to a twenty-one hundred foot stage and that sort of thing.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions from?
Okay, so I have questions and I also have comments on the athletics. I guess I'll start with the athletics. So it sounds like the gym, so I was in, okay, so I'm on the building committee. I was one of the people talking, involved in talking about what the size, you know, looking at the size that was proposed and discussing it. And there was some back and forth thing about it. And it sounds like it's gone, an additional iteration that I was unaware of, that the jogging track is back in, or not a jogging, yeah, I guess it's a jogging track, not a running track. We were shown a gym that had a configuration of three separate spaces, three side courts this way and then one main court that way and no, no track.
Can I, can I reply just to that?
Yeah.
So there was discussion going back and forth. And it, A, from what I got from the committee and from what I heard from everyone else, it didn't seem like, A, there was a decision on which of those configurations was preferred. And B, it didn't seem like, given the arguments that we were making to the MSBA at this point, that it made a difference in terms of, like, I could have, I could have written, oh, we could do this, we could do this, we could do this, we could do this. But it didn't feel like the MSBA cared or like it was necessary at this stage. So I left the argument in that I had already made to be a, to a large extent. I think if, if instructed to make a different argument, I'll just change that section.
So the, where I was coming, where I was taking, my understanding of it was from what Ms. Coles wrote in one of her emails, that she, that jogging track was not a proposal, that the side court, you know, the three side court was what was being proposed. My concern with that was that we would then have three athletic teams, which would not, their needs would not be being served in any way with the facilities that were under consideration. And I felt like, you know, yes, we may end up there. If the MSBA template forces us, I understand that they don't seem to take athletics into consideration, extracurricular athletics. But I think there's still, no matter whether the MSBA cares or not, I think it's something our town will care about. I think it's something our community will care about. It's something our parents and our students will care about. And that if we're making significant changes to our athletic programming because we cannot provide the needed facilities, then I think we need to be doing it knowingly, not have it come up in six months and go, oh, oops. And that was part of what concerns me about the sixteen thousand square foot gym. I was one of the ones who proposed that I think we need to be considering a fieldhouse. It's, I personally, without having the chance to do lots of professional background talks and stuff, but with what I was able to find out, feel that it could meet more of our athletic needs, our PE needs, our PE needs as we get into a school with two thousand and more students. And it gives us a flexibility of space that I'm concerned, I'm worried that if we make the sixteen thousand foot gym, we're gonna end up with a bigger thing that is not going to serve our needs as well. And I would rather put, just go with a smaller twelve thousand standard sized gym and then build a fieldhouse. And then we've got a great big space. We've got a big space. And then we've got the other little spaces and, and we have lots of flexibility. I am concerned, we're already at forced facilities usage right now, how we're going to function as we go forward and start going into the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, two thousand students, whether we're gonna have enough to satisfy our programming. I'm worried, I'm just not sure that there's enough space there. And then I am, again, just trying to make sure that we're providing as much ability to maintain our current athletic program as we can. And I question the ability of being able to find gym space in other things for the gymnastic team. I do have a student on it, so I'm not, it's, I both know it. I'm not trying to push just gymnastics, but I have knowledge of it. And the gyms do not have much time. The gym that they were practicing in could not hold meets, is not a full sized gym. And it would not, it doesn't serve for the level of gymnastics that the kids are doing. So I think there is a good chance that if there is not space in the facility as it's built, that we do, you cannot assume that you will then be able to continue the gymnastics program. And if that's so, that's too bad. And I'd be sorry to see that. And I think it's too bad for the school and for the kids. But I just want us to do it knowingly, not to be surprised. So that's, I guess that's mainly a comment. Don't really have any questions about. Or I guess, my big question is, have we looked at higher numbers of students beyond the seventeen fifty-five? And would the facilities that the MSBA lets us have and, and the extra alt spaces that we're doing, are we going to be able to program everyone's needs? And not just, you know, not just the graduation requirements, but, but the kids are liking to do more than the graduation requirements. Are we going to be able to satisfy that stuff?
Well, you're never gonna get me to say no to more space. You know, I mean, I love the fact that we have the blue gym, the pit. You know, the pit is an overflow space then for special ed uses. The blue gym and, and the red gym and the fitness room, those are great spaces to have. In sort of going through and working this through and talking to folks, I feel like we can program for athletic, I'm sorry, for PE in the five spaces that we would then have. The two, the one, the gym, the big gym that could be divided, the P, the fitness room, the all PE room and the special ed all PE room. I think we could provide the programming that we need to do. Again, athletics likes to be able to, you know, have gymnastics be able to stay set up and have a separate gym. They wouldn't be able to do that. Or if they would, it would sort of make the space less usable as a basketball space. So those are the two options. So those are challenging. I think we could function in those spaces. It's not as much space as we would like. So I, I mean, I guess I don't know how to answer the question other than to say, what I've written here, I think is doable within the constraints placed upon us by the MSBA. If the community wanted to go bigger, I would be happy to do it.
I think, just to clarify, I think, am I correct, Kirsty, that you're saying that rather than build a sixteen thousand square foot space, you'd rather do a twelve thousand and then have a separate project for, in an ideal world, for a fieldhouse?
We have to, it may not be clear to everyone, but that extra four thousand square foot of the gym, the beyond twelve K, we're paying for it. It's all on our dime. I'd rather take all the money from there and stick it in a fieldhouse, which is not comparatively, I mean, it, it's more expensive, but it's not huge like making the whole space inside the school.
Build what's reimbursable by MSBA, twelve thousand square feet. Go to the voters, the plan for a fieldhouse. That's a, a whole project that would be separate from the building project. We would have to do it separate.
Separate vote. This is clarification. Okay.
But I mean, I'll let Kirsty finish, let Kirsty finish her questions and then comments and then pick it up from there. Unless anyone has a comment, unless anyone has a question or have a conversation about that issue. Okay.
I would just make one comment. It's the, so people know that this has been thought about in the five hundred to five fifty, actually five tens, hundred, five hundred ten dollars per square foot. So if we did not have the two, the four thousand, we're basically would have a couple million dollars that would not be.
It'd be three because they do, before they hit the five hundred thousand dollar square foot, they do a net to gross calculation, which is on. Yeah, so it bumps it up another half. So it would have been like three million.
We have three million dollars we could apply to the fieldhouse.
The fieldhouse is, it only runs around two fifty to three hundred dollars a square foot. So it's a much cheaper, comparatively cheaper.
On that issue.
On that issue. So you have a question? Yeah.
I appreciate everything you're saying on this. The track to me is a very, very important thing, based on, for a better phrase, my constituency of the senior citizens in the town. Remember historically, when this town was a track dynasty in, in, in the history. And they feel very strong about it. They see that as a, a component across the board. And it, to me, it's an important thing to get the things passed. That's where I'm coming from on that and as an element.
Yeah.
I mean, I would support, I would, I'll be honest with you. I see the need for a fieldhouse. I think that's very, very important. And I'm usually the one doesn't want to spend money, but I would support a both thing.
Yeah, go ahead, go.
Oh, just a question. Would it be possible, and we probably don't know yet, to construct the building such a way that you could add a fieldhouse on a few years later? Or is that, I mean, is that?
It has to be, it has to be freestanding from the high school.
Mm-hmm.
It can't be added on. Maybe with a covered walkway or something, but.
So you could add one on later, but it would be, have to be freestanding?
You'd have to plan the high school to do that. Fieldhouse is a fairly large structure.
Right. I'm saying, is it, can we think when we design the plan or is that just too hard to do?
We could direct the architectural team to design the building, leaving space for a fieldhouse on the campus.
Right, right.
May I say something? But, but then I think that's a, a discussion that happened to building committee because I don't know what kind of constraint that condition would place on the whole design.
Right. Right, okay. Yeah, so I mean, so I think, so I'm not sure tonight, we have to make a decision on the fourth, of the, of this, of a twelve thousand square foot
Right.
of athletic, athletic spaces or sixteen thousand square feet. I don't believe we do.
You don't.
We don't. So tonight, we're just, but I think we're just raising the issue. But it's, it's an issue the, the building committee has to discuss. And then we would come back to the full school committee just to kind of keep everyone apprised of that, of that dialogue. Go ahead.
I have another question unrelated.
Unrelated, no, that Kirsty can share.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, let me, okay, so my main other questions all fall under kind of the heading of growth and are we planning for enough growth? Specifically, I'm wondering if for the preschool, they talk about adding, that they're adding a classroom next year and then they're anticipating thirty percent increase. So they're asking for ten, asking for a total of nine, except that when I do a thirty percent increase over next year, I think they should be coming up with ten. And so I'm questioning that. I'm also wondering whether that thirty percent increase estimate is accurate and, or I'm wondering where it came from and whether it's looking far enough out because we're not gonna be able to add space easily later. So that's a question. I'm wondering about the lab program and whether there was, if, if there's any growth anticipated because I didn't see that in the description. And for the special ed space, I wondered if one conference room was enough, especially as the school grows. I mean, I'm just thinking about all the different IEP meetings and that, that seems like it's becoming, it would become a bottleneck.
The lab space, I defer to Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Barbieri. You are the lab executive director and the coordinator at the high school. So Matt, I don't know if you have more information from Steven or Patrick.
No, I have pretty much what I wrote there.
Kathy are, obviously are, the bio, the collaborative, kind of are, based on how much space we give to them and the tuition and reimbursement patterns, lab.
Right, there's, there's all of, all of that components. This is what they thought. Yes, lab, it's possible lab could grow. They didn't give any additional requests for space. The architect did interview them. This represents five communities. Not all communities are growing at the same rate that we are. But also, there, there is capacity within the space that we have for more students. That I do know.
Well, and we anticipate, we would like, we've asked to add that life skills eighteen to twenty-two. So that would ideally mean fewer students were going out of district, who traditionally go to lab, from Austin. So that would be part of it. As for the elementary, or the preschool, I'm just pulling it up to see that, were you basing it on a thirty percent? It says thirty percent or?
I actually think that I probably was working off the same thirty percent from the high school and I'm looking now at the enrollment projections.
I was gonna say, I didn't.
For kindergarten and they're relatively flat.
Okay.
When Ms. Schlinger, the director, John and I have met around it. I mean, we're looking at, over the last four years is what we looked at for the projections for next year. So we're adding fifteen to twenty kids over the course of each year for the last four years. So I didn't give a statistic as to what that is of the whole. I mean, there's also the factor is that in the preschool, you have students who come for the full day. And then you have students who come for drop-in, we call drop-in services. So we're around a hundred students total. But I don't have an exact estimate as for that growth.
So, so that makes me wonder even more if there's enough growth potential anticipated for the preschool because you're talking like fifteen percent growth over one year from the numbers that you just talked about. And it, anyway, so, so, okay, so this is a question I have and I'd like to get it straightened out.
Well, I think, I mean, I can, Dr. Bodie can answer. I know that we are struggling with that piece of what you have versus what you're projecting. And I know that we don't have census information to tell us who's coming to us as three-year-olds, but.
You know, we've done this, we've looked at this in demographics. The numbers we have right now reflect the num, the students, the class sizes of the five hundreds. So in other words, where you see this big growth that can be occurring in the years out, it's really can be at the secondary level. We're probably getting close to the flattening. At least that's, that's what we had in the McKibben report. We're not gonna see classes of six hundred.
But, but is that?
At least right now, we don't think.
Is that happening with the special education and especially as? Is that happening with the special education, and especially as in the younger ages? Because I thought we were having more students identified. And, anyway, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not saying you folks need to answer this question, I'm saying that, that this came up, and it just mentally didn't check for, you know, thirty percent over what, yeah, so it's, it's kind of what time period do we need to be looking at? And are we accurately projecting what our needs would be, and building that into the plan? Okay, and then guidance was another question, whether there's enough space allocated for the school as it grows. And it wasn't clear to me past the seventeen fifty-five if there's going to be space, and how we would...
So the MSBA's nine classrooms is based on their estimate of two hundred students per guidance counselor. We are currently staffing at two hundred and fifty students per guidance counselor, because that's sort of the, the maximum. So if we were up at two thousand students, we would only have, we would still potentially could only have eight guidance counselors. So that keeps us okay in guidance for a long time.
Okay. Then the final question that I just wondered about was, I didn't, I only saw one very brief mention about any students with physical handicaps, difficult with, difficulty with mobility, or vision, or whatever. And I just wonder, is there any place that it should be being addressed in the ed plan?
So I guess I would say two things. One, it sort of goes without saying that the building will be accessible. It has to be by law. We did, however, place the programs that are most likely to have students with accessibility issues, the lab programs, summit, and reach centrally, so that they're not, you know, the, the idea in terms of adjacencies is they're at the heart of the building, and they're not down some wing or off in a corner somewhere. So it was taken into account that way in terms of just the adjacency request, to make it easier for students in general and the more high-needs groups. Now, it is entirely possible that we have a student who is otherwise able, not in a sort of special program, who's accessing the whole building. And for that purposes, the building has to be accessible, and we're hoping to have a building that it's easier for everybody to get around.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, you have your...
Uh, no, pass.
Any other questions for Dr. Jangor? Okay, now our responsibility is to take a vote on the educational plan. I mean, the understanding is, is that this is a, a framework, and the building committee, the design, design team will use this to build, to create the design for the school. So a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second?
Any further discussion on the motion? Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the, the plan passes. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Now we move to your report on discipline. Matt? Am I projecting from here? Okay. So this is a follow-up from our conversation that we had earlier in the year, correct? Yep. I don't remember which meeting it was, but just to refresh everyone's memory, we had a report on discipline. There were some questions raised. Matt agreed to come in to answer those questions with more information.
I just got the windows wrong.
Right here, maybe one of these.
Let me think.
Yep.
What am I getting up there now? Okay, hang on a sec. System preferences. Probably don't want to know if we can go to Anya's house tonight. These things are dangerous, I'll tell you.
My god, yeah, you better be...
The other day, I was proj, I was showing a movie from my new computer, and I didn't realize that my new computer now got my text messages. Fortunately, it was not window to window, so we were okay, but a little scary. And now it's lost me, hold on. Better living through technology, we'd like to say. There you go. Okay. So I prepared this report back towards the end of January, based on the data we had up until now. Dr. Bodie called me and asked me just, just whether we've, have new data. We have actually been looking at our monthly data on discipline. I can say actually that the data gets better this month, because I don't know what happened in February, but we actually only had one out-of-school suspension and one in-school suspension. And the out-of-school suspension was from a student who actually had just moved to town and actually was not a resident of Arlington. So, but what we wanted to talk about a little bit was the overall disciplinary trends in Arlington High School, what we think is going on, and what we're doing about it. And so if you look over the last four years, you can see that the number of incidents has actually gone, was steady, but then spiked. So we had fifty-six in-school and out-of-school suspensions, fifty-three, and then seventy-six last year. This year, if you look, and one of the things to point out is, if you look at those, those are incidents of suspension. So one incident, one student may have multiple of those, and actually, as we were logging them, it is also possible that one incident would be logged as multiple suspensions, which we have changed in the log, in, in the way they're logged now. So that also changed things, because, for example, the law allows us, when we, we have to have a hearing before we can suspend a student out of school. However, if we don't have the time or ability, but feel that it is appropriate and safe for the student to go home, the student may be emergency removed. So there'd be an emergency removal, then there'd be a hearing and a suspension, and in some cases, particularly last year, if there was a further hearing on an incident like a drug offense, a weapons offense, or an assault, there would then also be potentially an expulsion hearing and further discipline. That should be logged as one incident, but sometimes was logged as two. So that said, the seventy-six, I think that's, I may be jumping ahead. Actually, I'll get to that in a second. So at this point, as you can see, we are significantly below. So we had twenty-two incidents logged for out-of-school or for suspensions of any kind as of January, so we would be up to twenty-four now. Of those, fourteen were out-of-school, and eleven were in-school. So we are on track to a substantially lower number of suspensions out-of-school overall. And that's important for a number of reasons. One, every, we, we are learning more and more, it does, it sort of goes without saying, if you think about it, that suspending kids out of school is not the ideal way to get kids more engaged or to behave better in school. As we've done more and more research on this and looked more at best practices, it turns out it's worse than we thought it was. That really, being suspended out of school becomes a real bellwether of students continuing to get more suspensions and more challenges in school, and eventually leading to dropout. In addition, those sorts of harsh disciplinary measures, because disciplinary offenses and disciplinary activities are often biased against students, or more commonly for students from minority groups, having ineffective discipline for those students disproportionately affects black and brown students. And so it's really not something we want to be continuing. Why did we have a spike last year of seventy-six? That did not come as a surprise to me. Last year, there were a few things that really caused us, last year, about halfway through, I believe, the year, I went to Dr. Bodie and said, I think I've had as many suspensions this year as I've had in the last three years combined. And the reason was the legalization of marijuana, which led to a significant spike in the presence of marijuana in school, and also an incidence of dealing in school, which we'd never really had a significant issue with before. And we also decided to take steps to address that. The political situation in the United States led to an increase in incidents around hate speech and other sorts of conflict. We've had an increase in mental health challenges in the high school going forward, and so we see that coming through, coming up from the middle school. The thirty-seven H and a half refers in particular to the drug, drug offenses. And then, as I spoke before, these issues and inconsistencies in data. So some of the things we went back and realized probably were over-reporting the number of suspensions. And then I talk a little bit about better policing. The reality is, in the last couple of years, we've done a much better job with our building subs, the use of cameras, and just general attention, in trying to get more control over behaviors in the school. That's a good thing for the safety of the school. It's a good thing in identifying kids who are concerning, but if you're dishing out discipline for it, it also leads to an increase in discipline. So we talked a little bit about racial disparities, and those have been pretty consistent in terms of our rates over the last four years. Of the forty-five students suspended, thirty-three percent were African-American. And if you look at our numbers, that's about three times their proportion in the population. Now, if you go to previous years, that proportion of two or three times our suspension rate being higher amongst African-Americans holds consistent. It does not hold consistent for Hispanics. Actually, our Hispanic suspension rate has been around the school average until last year. One of the issues that we have is that there is some over-reporting of that, because Arlington has a high proportion of students who come in from out of the community and are only here for short periods of time. And those students come to us with a higher level of discipline issues or behavioral challenges, and those students look more like the Boston area than, than Arlington does. So you get a disproportionate number of students who are being given suspensions or having discipline issues who are from minority groups. That doesn't mean that we don't have an issue around higher levels of suspension of minority groups, but it does mean that we tend to over-report that a little bit. So if you look at this year, we are still seeing a similar pattern. But at this point, we've only had ten students suspended. And so the most important thing we've done, let's just see if I have that as a slide, is collaborative problem solving, and I'll come back to that. We talked a little bit about the challenges around suspension. We've, we've been trying for the last five years that I've been here to keep suspension levels low. And for the most part, they have been, they've been, you know, around fifty-five, that usually accounted for about thirty students. Last year, they were up to seventy-six and forty-five students. And so last year, we went really whole hog at trying to address suspensions and discipline from a positive behavioral support approach. So collaborative problem solving is an evidence-based approach. It's promoted by, and trained in by Mass General Hospital. There are two fellows who are sort of the main proponents of it, a fellow named Dr. Stuart Avalon, who works at MGH, and a fellow named Dr. Ross Green, who wrote the books, The Explosive Child and Lost at School, who has a group called Lives in the Balance. We've been working with the group at MGH, which is called Think Kids. So last year, at the end of the year, we had pretty much every one of our student study team, which is guidance counselors, social workers, and a lot of the BSPs who work with students who have behavioral challenges, trained in collaborative problem solving. We also had the entire administrative team went to a three-day tier-one training at MGH over the summer, and we had about four more people attend this January. And actually, I've been talking to Dr. Avalon about having Arlington be a, basically a demonstration site going forward for full system implementation of collaborative problem solving. So collaborative problem solving is kind of a funny thing, and he tells the story this way, and all, I'm sorry, and all of the staff have also been through an initial training. So everybody's been introduced to it, and we've been piloting it throughout the school. The idea of collaborative problem solving is this, traditional discipline goes by the model, kids succeed if they want to. I'm sorry, and the idea is that if a kid doesn't come on time to class, you make them want to by giving them a consequence. If a kid doesn't behave properly in school, you make them want to by giving them a consequence. But the evidence is that external consequences don't teach kids how to do something that they're not able to do. So external consequences tell kids that we are serious about this expectation. So for students who can come to school on time, giving them a tardy works. They say, oh, they're serious about this consequence, and they come to school on time. But for students who can't, it doesn't. And so the model of collaborative problem solving is students succeed if they can. And so if you look at a student, and, and his example is really very simple, you look at a, the behavior that may be appropriate in a five-year-old, but if you saw it in a ten-year-old, it wouldn't be okay. My five, my one-and-a-half-year-old bit me on the shoulder the other day. He thought it, he just, I don't know, he was bored. He just bit me on the shoulder for no particular reason. I said, don't do that, and I put him down and walked away. But if my sixteen-year-old bit me on the shoulder, I'd have been calling the police. And so the idea is that we understand that these things are developmental delays in things like reading, executive functioning, and many of these things similarly are challenges for students. One of the nice things about collaborative problem solving is if you look at all the other research that we've been looking at around trauma-sensitive schools, around schools that deal with anxiety, in the end, you come back around to what is it you should be doing with these students? And the answer is collaborative problem solving, addressing it, looking for the lagging skills and unsolved problems, which are making it so the student can't meet the issue. And the deans have been, and, and I will say this, thank you to the school committee, having two-point-six deans, and then hopefully three deans next year, has made an enormous difference, because putting the dean's caseload from six-hundred-and-fifty to a little around four-hundred means that they're able to get out there and check attendance, which becomes a bellwether, and get out to the students and do collaborative problem solving on small problems before they become big problems. And so the result has been dropping our disciplinary referrals down to a point where it looks like we're on track to have about thirty-six suspensions out of school, as opposed to seventy-six the year before, and fifty-five or so every year before that. So we're pretty excited about it. We'd like to get it lower, but it's a good start. The other thing to just talk about is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-seven H. When we look at things like discipline data, we, we sometimes look at them two ways. On the one hand, we do not want to be disciplining students out of school for being disrespectful to a teacher in class, or for having multiple detentions, or that sort of behavior, which to a large extent is coming as a result of disaffection, disconnection in school, and an inability to function. We want to build a helping relationship with that student, and we want to give them skills and support so that they can become successful. But Chapter Thirty-seven H of the Massachusetts General Law Thirty-seven, we just called Thirty-seven H. Thirty-seven H gives us the authority to suspend a student out of school if they're charged with, or the felony, and to expel a student out of school if they're convicted of a felony. It gives us the authority to suspend a student out of school if they assault a teacher, bring a weapon to school, or bring drugs to school. Now, we use that tool, our goal is not to expel students out of school, but it is very helpful, because we sometimes have school, students arrive in Arlington and arrive at our gates, who have some very serious felony charges pending, and are really not ready or able to be in school. And that gives us the ability to stop them at the door and make sure that we place them safely for the safety of the school. We've also used Chapter Thirty-seven H to really work with students who are in trouble. Sometimes it is necessary to be able to say to a student, it's time for you to take care of these issues. So one of the things that we did last year, and we're continuing to do this year, is any student found with possession of drugs in school is, can be expelled. Now, very few schools, ourselves included, are likely to expel a kid who is, if it gets high in school, they'll get five days, and then some sort of an intervention, and then other work going forward. But if that student has a little butt, we're not going to treat that significantly differently, except for the fact that that gives us the authority to say to that student, you need to get therapy, you need to get treatment, you need to work on your academics, you need to take care of the issues that underlie your use of drugs in school. And in the cases where students come in selling, which really had never happened, but last year, immediately following the legalization of marijuana, we had multiple incidents of students bringing relatively substantial quantities of marijuana into school to deal. And we don't want that in the school. Now, in those cases, we will move to expulsion, but understand again, that when we move to expulsion, that doesn't, although the law says that can mean a student is out of school permanently, it's never what it means for us. And actually, every single student that we have expelled from Arlington is now back in Arlington and is making progress. So the, the effort, although they are suspended out of school, and though that's not a great thing, we use that as a lever to have a conversation with them and their family, and to get them into treatment so that they're successful here in school. So I think that is my last slide.
I need, yeah, Jennifer?
So, well, I was saddened to see the numbers rise so much last year, and the disparate effect on minorities. I am very heartened by the way that you're talking, and by the understanding of how devastating suspensions can be on students who, as you say, are, are disaffected or dissatisfied with school, aren't connected to school at that point, and the discussion around alternative methods, and I think that's great. I would also say that someone who has substance use issues, or is potentially also a kid who is very disconnected, you know, who, 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 being suspended doesn't necessarily help that, right? And so while, I mean, not talking dealing, but, but, but someone who's just high or something, that, that's a kid who's asking for help at that point, I think. And so just, we have to realize that, so...
You know, and we do, I mean, the, I mean, the simple point is, as I said before, the rules help us to let kids know that we're serious about the rules. kids know that we're serious about the rules. But the rules do not help a kid get better.
Right.
Right? So, if we don't inter, if we do not intervene and if we do not engage with students who are having drug problems in school or reeling in school, then we don't get very far. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'd like to recommend to the committee that this be an annual report probably in September for what happened during the prior year. Be a regular report in September.
We seem to get it on a regular basis, but is it, it's not a policy? I guess it's not.
I started it because I, because I talked to other school committees, people and other school members, and they did it in their town. And so, I sort of initiated the idea, but it isn't in our policy.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I ask another question?
Can I just ask one question? I mean, September's fine. Is there a reporting schedule that Maryland already follows that would help us to do this so it's not duplicating effort?
Yes, and I think it's in October.
October, is it? Okay. Okay. So, I mean, October to the state.
But we will be, I mean, we're tracking it every month, and we will be putting it into our school improvement plan for next year. And I will say, I mean, one of the things you say about students being disconnected from school, it all connects. I mean, the reason we were doing Inclusion Day yesterday and the reason why we've been working so hard this year on cultural competency and social-emotional learning is because it is the students who are disconnected from school and who are experiencing trauma in their own lives who are self-medicating and who are coming in and being disruptive. So, to the extent that we can reach out to those students and have them connect, they're more likely to be successful in school and to engage with us in getting better. You know, one of the pieces of research we've looked at a couple of times with the staff is, which is the research on student, the impact on students of feeling that the school cares about them. And when students feel that this, someone in the school cares about them or that the school cares about them, they do significantly better. One of the things that we have to understand as a school is that the way that we as teachers show that we care and the way the kids that perceive that we care are not always the same. I know as an English teacher, I should, I would say to the kids, "I show that I care by making you work hard," you know, teaching right up to the bell, and they'd be like, "I'm not feeling it," right? That was not what they, what they were looking for. They were looking for you to take an interest in them first. And so, I think it's a both and. I want the high expectations, but also those connections.
I guess what I'm looking for in the report, and I'm not knocking Maryland, not just the numbers, but the, the stuff that you've given us behind it, and I think that's, we know it as a committee, but I think it's important for the community to hear this, that discipline is, can be a very positive thing in the long run, and that's where we're coming from. That's the purpose. And I think you've done a commendable job in that. That's where I'm coming from in that report.
Okay. So, I mean, I think we've had, you know, the calendar that we created, we have it actually calendared for back to us.
Yeah, we have in our, yeah.
You know, okay, go ahead.
I have a separate question. So, this came up, so between when you came the first time and we were supposed to come the second time, we got our MCAT scores. And remember, and I should have reminded everyone about this, but one of the questions that came up from that is how many students had really high absentee rates? And I remember Dr. Allison Appley and I were both very surprised that, and I meant to look up the numbers, and I forgot to before I came here, but, but that there was just, seemed like a very large number of students that were, had very, very high absentee, I mean, much, and it was higher than other districts. So, it was sort of, I was wondering if you had an explanation of that, if that was...
I don't know why we're higher than other districts. I do know that we have populations of students at Arlington High School with very high absentee rates.
Right.
Those, I would say, fall largely into two groups. One of the groups is kind of chronic mental and medical health issues. Those are the students often addressed by Harbor. They find it challenging to come to school. They find it challenging to stick it out during the day. And then, the other is a population of students who are a little bit disaffected and don't always choose to come to class as much as they should. I know it's a huge push. I mean, like I said earlier on, attendance is the canary in the coalmine, you know, and the fact that we've had the three deans really monitoring attendance on a weekly basis much more closely has identified a lot more issues. I think pushed a lot more kids successfully in. I do think, once I'm done with collaborative problem solving, really thinking about beyond, I mean, one, engaging the kids, calling the kids in, having a meeting with the kids, and then engaging in collaborative problem solving is probably the most effective thing we can do. If that doesn't solve the problem, I think we're going to move on to other things because it is a, you know, it is an absolutely significant issue in the high school.
And I worry as our, our school is becoming more sort of academically challenging and more high stakes, you know, I worry about kids being left behind there, who might feel that they can't achieve that same level of high stakes.
I don't think we could get more high stakes. I'm hoping we're not actually.
No, well, I mean, I feel, I mean...
I hope, I hope the capacity of students to learn and the challenge that students can take on continues to be there and that the options continue to be there for students, but I hope we move more and more to having students have a growth mindset and really looking at the challenge they're taking as not being, I mean, it is not a race. Like, one of the things I say to the parents and the kids over and over again is, "It is not a race." You know, the reason why you now need, they don't believe me, and the culture doesn't believe me, but one of the reasons why students, if a student chooses to take five AP classes, they need to meet with me. And most of that conversation is just like, "You know there are lots of, why are you doing this? There are lots of other things that you can do to advance your learning other than take five AP classes." And if taking five AP classes means you don't engage in a club or do something extracurricular or participate in other activities, it's probably not in your best interest personally in terms of your growth or in terms of your college goals. I don't know whether that's affected the numbers. I do know that a few kids every year after that conversation don't, and the ones that do, I think, actually do it for the right reasons, which I think is good.
Matt, I would just add that in the educational plan for the high schools, some of the space needs are directed at those kids who are having difficulty coming to school, making sure that they have different entrance points to the building so they aren't as overwhelmed by the building, making it more user-friendly or making it also, so maybe they have a smaller space to navigate. That's part of the goal in the design plan.
Right. And that is true. And I would say, I mean, the more that we can find ways for kids to find their own way to meet the standards, you know, we're working on that in terms of, you know, individualized learning and MOOCs and certificates in terms of reflecting kids, but the more we can find ways for kids that have multiple pathways to meet the goals, the more kids are going to be able to find their way through. Because many, many kids find high school the way we do it hard, right? It's kind of a gauntlet of class, 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 class. And for lots of kids, it's not that big a deal, but for some, it's very hard. And some of those kids will go off, you know, much to their own surprise, they will go off to community college their senior year and be actually very successful because the pace is very different and the individual structure is very difficult, which means for us, the learning experiences, we could bring some of that flexibility into the building as we go forward.
Kirsty.
Thank you very much for this. I'm glad that we were able to hear it again. I wanted to highlight what you said about the helpfulness of having the extra dean support. And I wondered if you had a number of students per dean that's sort of the best, I mean, lower is better, but...
Under five hundred.
Okay.
I mean, there is actually research on small schools and clusters and schools within schools, and usually their number sort of shows that you get good effects up to about five hundred and then you start to lose touch. You can't really kind of keep your hands around all of the kids and be able to contact them. That's actually written into the educational program too. That's part of why, as we go to seventeen-fifty, I would like a building which is designed to allow us to have four houses. I don't know if we'll be able to staff it, but I would, you know, we'll find a way to make it work because when we're getting up to eighteen-fifty, we're, if we're back at three deans, we're going to be at three deans with six hundred students each again.
Yeah. And that's, I did read it in the educational plan. This is partly for millions of audiences.
Yeah.
But also for us, because as we go through budgeting, there's going to, we're going to hit points where we're going to be asked, and I know this last time, the last, you know, getting that extra dean support has been difficult, and it's been a controversy among us, and I think that we should understand that there are things that are coming out of it that are really helpful for students that I don't think we heard as much of going into it. So, that's all.
Right. And one thing to understand is different, you know, because you'll look, we have a high level of assistant to the principal level administrators compared to some other schools that are bigger than we are. And a lot of that has to do with how you use them. I mean, we, you know, in terms of, we have those because it's an easier way to create community than hiring ten more teachers. You know, if I could hire ten more teachers versus one dean, I'd go with the ten more teachers, but if it's a dean versus, you know, one more teacher, which is going to have a small impact on, on class size, then I think that it becomes a trade-off in terms of being able to have that kind of contact with teachers.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, Lynn, go ahead.
So, just one quick thing. There's been concern on the committee with Maryland's data about the racial disparities that you pointed out here. And you did mention the, you know, the aspect of the transfer students, the kids that are in the programs and coming with a different profile. It would be interesting if you could, if Maryland or you could take a look at the data and see, if you sort of remove those kids from the population, it may not be data you can share with us, but at least you can look at it internally to see what does the disparity then look like.
So, it's about two to two-and-a-half times.
Okay.
And so, the other question, I mean, so when you're looking at that question, we have a racial disparity. What's going on?
Right.
Right? And so, it could be that we are giving different consequences for the same offense. I've seen that in other schools. That does not appear to be the case in our data. It could, so, so there is a difference in behavior. And where does that difference in behavior come from? And, you know, the answers are, some of it resides in sort of what the school, student brings to school with them, and some of that resides in what that student finds when they arrive in our school. There could also be a difference in policing. I don't believe that to be the case. It's hard to tell. But, you know, the reality is, I think we have to accept that we have very capable students who are in minority groups who come to our school and they don't feel as connected. We've had those conversations with students. And if they don't feel connected, they're going to find themselves having, you know, challenging interactions in school more often than other students who feel more connected. So, that's what we can change. And to the extent that they bring things to them, with them to school, whatever their background may be that caused them to have a difference in behavior, what can we do? We can work with them through collaborative problem solving to address the unsolved problems and underlying issues. So, in the end, that's the strategy that's going to help everybody the most.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
We are going to move now to the discussion of Superintendent Bodie's budget priorities, and then, any questions you might, you might have on the budget, and then a vote on the budget for fiscal year nineteen. So, I'm going to turn over Dr. Bodie.
Thank you very much. So, the budget priorities that we had with the superintendent's budget proposal remain as they were. What the committee had asked for tonight was to have a priority list of the unmet needs because we very likely will receive additional money for Chapter Seventy. How much that additional money remains to be seen. If we use the governor's budget, that amount of money is two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. But what we agreed with in the Long Range Planning Committee is that we would not use the governor's budget, but rather use the House Ways and Means budget, which is not known yet, probably not for a few more weeks. Been longer than that in past years too. So, it's hard to say when that will occur. So, will it be less than two-forty-two? It's possible. Probably not, given what I've been reading recently in terms of additional monies that have been, have come forward that are being used, for example, in schools to offset the costs of students that come from Puerto Rico during their hurricane. So, I don't, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that question, but what we have here is the list of priorities for the, for the two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. But this was not as much in direct priority order, but it, it actually is. The first thing that we really would have to fund, unless the reserved positions were not eaten up by classrooms at the elementary or the secondary level, would be to fund the preschool classroom teacher. And it may be that if we would have no increase in Chapter Seventy money, what that would mean is that the, the three reserved positions we had in the original budget ask, one of those would have to be preschool. And one, we're pretty sure is going to be bracket, so that leaves one for the whole district. So, that would be in that priority. So, and anytime you have a preschool teacher, classroom that needed a preschool teaching assistance. We also wonder, until we get things scheduled and we see how enrollment grows, whether we needed another reserved position. And of course, we've also talked here at the table about large-class-sized TAs. And it is possible, if we didn't need that reserved position, there might be more money available for other large-class TAs. While it did not go into the first request because we actually had a very limited amount of money, we would really like, and it would make a big difference at our elementary, to have a point-five math coach. In, with this addition, we would be able to have every elementary school have a point-five math coach. And right now, there's, there's some splitting that's going on in order to cover all the schools. And then, there would be an increase in the summer PD budget. We have been spending more money in past years on summer PD than we actually asked for in the superintendent's budget. So, this would be something that'd be very welcome. What we find is that the work, the investment in summer PD is probably the best investment during the year for professional development, both for the curriculum work that's done over the summer as well as PD opportunities. For example, this year, we have no grants other than for the middle school, but for the elementary, we have no grants to support responsive classroom training. And overwhelmingly, that is a high request from our elementary schools. In fact, we have two sessions, and I think they're both already filled. We could, we could even do more. So, that's the first list. That's the priority list, Abe. Then, we were asked to go beyond that, up to about five-hundred thousand, what would be our next priorities? And this is in a, this also is in a priority list. It would be, this was part of the principal's ask, was to have assistant principals, and they look at it over multiple years, but the, the positive impact this year of having two-point-five assistant principals at two of our elementary has been very positive. And if we could extend that to our other larger elementary schools, or probably even in priority order would be our elementary schools that have a special program in them, that would be terrific. And then, there's a request for an additional point-five nurse that would be helping out at the high school and preschool. This point-five counselor would allow, we would still meet the contractual obligations we have for, for caseload size, but this extra point-five would mean that we would not have to have a point-five position. We would actually be able to have four counselors at the middle school. And then, in the Long Range Plan of our math director, Matt Coleman, this one-point-oh is actually not one person, but two-point-five positions, to have a combination of coaching and interventionists in elementary schools. Right now, we have pretty much that kind of model with our literacy program. We have, we have a lot more interventionists at the elementary level. Those are our reading teachers. And we have, we have coaching as well. We're, as you know, from the, from the original ask for next year, we're asking for a literacy coach, again, just because of our growing number of classrooms and just the growing need as we implement a number of our, the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program and, and our Reading Program. So, this is sort of, is sort of a modeling of that. Right now, our only math intervention is really our, we have a limited number, and they're not universal in all of our elementary schools. So, and then, of course, curriculum supplies and materials. We have a, we have a list of curriculum materials in priority order, and some of these are, you know, multiple years out, so we would just accelerate the purchase of these if we had some additional funds. So, that's the, the broad view of what the additional request would be. I don't know if any of my colleagues here would want to add anything to this.
No, I, I think just one point to make about the, about the asks for the elementary school was that when the elementary principals were here, they talked about the multi-year approach and having sort of what a model school looked like. It's, it's some... It's, it's something that the, that we talked about at long range planning, was asked of us, something that's been asked of us here, too. And that sort of gets at that, that that's, those, those are pieces that are what's next in, in making that model consistent throughout the whole elementary level.
Bill?
Down on the second list, two questions on the nurse. Do we currently have a .5 at, at the elementary schools, full time? Are we sharing nurses at the elementary?
Oh, no, every school has their own nurse.
And the second one, on the counselor, that, raising it up, is that just for seventh and eighth grade next year?
Yes.
So there'd be four?
Yes.
How many would be at Gibbs, then?
Two.
Thank you.
Cindy?
On the nurse, how many nurses are there for the preschool?
There is a, a .5. She's actually, she is, she actually is a 1.0 position, she's in the preschool, but she has additional responsibility going over to Millbrook. But she is located in the preschool.
So this would stop her from having to do that?
No, probably she would continue that, though that's a possibility, I'm not saying that that wouldn't happen. It would be just for some additional support, either at the preschool, covering her when she is at Millbrook, or also supporting our full-time nurse in the high school.
And how many nurses are at the high school?
One.
So it seemed to me that a nurse is actually, in my mind, is a much higher priority than most of this other stuff. Given the, I did not know that there was only one nurse for all of the high school. And I would like to see the .5 FTE nurse be moved up to the first list of unmet needs, and the math coach, and some of the summer PD dropped. Because I think safety, especially nurses, we know that that's, that support person in particular is very important. Other than that, I feel like...
We have done quite a bit of consulting with our Director of Nursing as to how, what the staffing is at the various schools. Her feeling is that there is some need for backup for the high school nurse, and backup for the preschool, but she is also available when there's other issues to, to be able to be here. And also, this year, we've had the availability of the person, the extra nurse at the middle school to be able to come. So there's always, there's always backup that's there for all of our nurses.
Right, but I, I mean, I just feel like, you know, we should probably set some number of students per nurse, just like we do for everything else. I mean, the high school, there's 12, over 1,200 students.
Right.
One nurse doesn't seem like enough.
No, I, I hear you saying, we actually, in the building, we have two nurses, and they're in different parts of the building. The nurse that's literally in the preschool, there, there's nothing that says that nurse cannot back up the high school nurse. We've always had two nurses, it's just that what we did this year was move the one person down to the preschool. But when she has to go to Millbrook, we don't have two nurses in the building. That's the issue, there's not two nurses in the building. Now, next year, we, right now, the, we have our middle school students and our high school students in the offsite Millbrook program. Next year, the middle school Millbrook program is moving back to Addison. So there will be fewer students by almost, sometimes half, that will be there. So, but this is, the idea of this is to be able to have two people in the building.
Right, and she actually goes over to Millbrook to deliver scheduled meds, is what she's doing, so it's not a .5 devoted to Millbrook?
It's not .5, but it's making sure that we have two in the building.
Right, right. Nope, no, I, I just...
Lynn?
So I think, you know, procedure wise, once we do get that number in, you know, at some point in April, we probably would, would need to see the final recommendation, and then we can vote or change it at that point, right?
Sure, absolutely.
So I think you can listen to our, our feedback now, and then when the final number comes in, maybe that's where you can fund the nurse, or, you know, whatever. So, that, that's how I was, I would suggest approaching it. My own feedback is, you know, as I said before, with the assistant principals, I'm glad that we tried it this year. Still early, the year's not over. At Hardy, it's been sort of a special situation because she's really been running two schools at once, so she really hasn't, that's been the benefit, she's been able to do that, but she hasn't really seen any other benefit from having the assistant principal. Dallin may be a better experiment, and maybe we can get a more, I, I need more evidence than, oh, it's been great. I need specifically, what has he been able to achieve, because he's had an assistant principal, that he hasn't been able to achieve in prior years? So if we could get that from him at the end of the year, then I would be, be, feel more comfortable expanding this. I'm not sure I would want to expand it, four schools at once, but even expanding it at all, and I'm still, the jury's still out on that for me.
I, I think, I, I totally agree that it'd be important for you to hear this. Right now, none of this is being voted on.
Right.
Because we don't have the money. And when we get to that point, what we could do is absolutely have Mr. Digman come in and speak to the committee, and I think it would also be helpful to have Ms. DeFrancisco, because even though she's been, that's allowed her to have a little bit more time out of the building to, to plan for the Gibbs, she would also be able to talk about what that would, what that, the benefit has been.
So Bill, and then we should move on to questions about the budget, yeah?
In, on, on the nurse thing, I support that 100%. I think it'd be helpful for us to know exactly what the nurses are doing here. I think Millbrook is a wild card to some extent in predictability, and so, some days you could be spending the whole day there, and there'd be, maybe other needs here, and then you have to adjust. And as far as the principal, Matt tonight gave us specifics of what the additional assistant principals are, the deans, in that case have afforded him to be able to do. So I think, supporting Lynn in that, getting information of exactly what that assistant principal's, the benefits for us. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna, yeah?
Oh, I'll, I'll wait.
So I thought we, we, so the next item on the agenda is just questions on the superintendent's budget, and then we have to vote for the bu, vote on the budget. That was presented to us on February 8. Go ahead.
Well, so actually, I had a question about the, the budget in general, so...
All right, this is good, perfect.
I guess, I guess.
You're on, you're on time, yep.
I, I, maybe not. So, so I did notice, when the budget was initially presented, that some of the asks for math were light, you know, weren't fulfilled as much. And I was wondering if you could just give an explanation of what we have now, so I just have a better picture. So what do we have in terms of interventionists, and, I mean, you sort of alluded to it, but, but what, how many do we have in the district so far?
Well, it's, it's more about the FTEs, because there's more people, some are .6, .5.
No, in FTEs, in FTEs.
Yeah, so the, right now, we'd have a total of about 3.1 FTEs for math coaches, with 3.1 or 3.2?
I don't know, right now.
Okay, okay. And then, interventionists, we have two. Yeah, just two. And they're not in all the schools, we have, go ahead.
We have two interventionist teachers.
Teachers, then we have some math practice guides, and we also have some tutors, tutors through, through, right, through Title I.
How does this compare with literacy? Are we reaching parity, or?
Well, I don't think we'll have parity in them, we, we have a lot of reading teachers.
Okay.
We have more reading teachers who provide direct instruction in the, in the schools, with three full-time literacy or reading coaches, literacy coaches in the district and elementary level.
That's more similar, okay.
Right now.
Okay. And, and then I guess, so suppose, this is different, so I suppose we were to have a TA in all the first and second grade classrooms that equal 25 or above, how many would we need? And I, I mean, I just guess, because the one, I mean, that, that's about the previous part.
Well, actually, I probably could guess, I mean, if I can pull up the, I'd have to pull it up, what the, what the enrollment chart was, I don't have it right here at my fingertips.
We'd be looking at today's numbers, which could change over the summer.
No, I, I know, I know, I know.
That's right.
Just like, yes, okay, so that's...
I would say, under five, maybe?
Okay.
In that vicinity? Though, going, looking at charts, because we have a couple of large class TAs already.
I, I think that's a goal that we want to work towards, that, that, I mean, kindergarten's super important, but first and second also super important as well.
I don't disagree. So what you're suggesting, if we're hitting 25, that's actually, what happens in some schools, and in fact, I, we've taught, we've had peers, Bishop parents here, when their classes are hovering in that 25, sometimes 26, 24, there's a mix in there, we have for the large class size TA in as a grade.
Right.
What you're suggesting is for each class.
Right, right.
So I think that's something we'd have to assess, and we could take a look at just where the numbers are next year, and, and see what that would be.
I just want to follow up on what Dr. Seuss said. Something else I heard from Bishop parents when I went and talked to them about the budget a couple of weeks ago, was that they would have, some of them would have liked to have known if there was a possibility of them moving to a different school that had a lower class size, even if they weren't in a buffer zone. But to have that possibility, rather than stay in a class, you know, they didn't feel so bonded at, at the school at that point, they would have considered hopping. I'm not sure how many would have taken up, but, you know, any, anyone who did that would make it better for, for the ones who remain, and presumably for themselves, because they chose to do it. So that's something else that could be considered, to give people the option, you know, say, I understand right now, we're not putting out how, we're not putting out classroom, class lists because of the privacy concerns, but we can tell people how many kids are in their student's class. And that gives them some information, and then, you know, if, if there's another school, especially if it's a nearby school, a buffer zone school, that has significantly smaller classes, give them the option to switch. But it's, I'm just saying, it's another trick that we can play to try and balance things out, which is, I think...
It's a possibility, I've done that actually twice, two years in a row, at Bishop, specifically. And, one, I had one family that was entering kindergarten, did that once. It's interesting, I think sometimes when you get, oh, we have...
I have, I'm an expert.
She's an expert, yeah. Maybe this one's, but it's hard, once you, they get an assignment to a school or a class, there's a real reluctance to move, but you, why don't you talk about, because this is actually a school...
So I teach first grade at Bishop, and I have 25 kids in my class this year, and there's 25 in each section, and we share one TA three ways. That's helped. Each having a TA would be, you know, a lot to ask, and I understand that. So the one extra TA has made a difference. But I, I totally agree with you, if a parent, you know, when we stood up and gave our curriculum open house in September, the parents heard that there was 25, 25, 25, for the first time, and some of them were really upset. And I think, had they known that the numbers were that high, it, you know, some of them would have opted to go to a different school, for, you know, a better class size for their students, and, and knowing their own kids, and, you know, knowing a small class would be best for their child. I think it's a nice option for parents to have, so...
All right, I think the motion, okay, so now the motion needs to be, to approve the superintendent's budget of $71,785,331. And no sense. So motion by Ms. Stark, second by Dr. Seuss. Any discussion on the superintendent's budget?
Real quick, I'm gonna vote against it for my annual reason, and I think we should put more.
I'd love, I want more money, three kids in the district, the more money, the better. Any, any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries six to one. All right, thank you very much. We have done the financial reports, and now we're gonna have a, a report on the goal 3.4, the reconfiguration of the Addison Middle School.
Okay. I was just looking at our class sizes, first grade, we would have, going back to our other discussion, would be the three at Bishop, and then one other class. For class sizes this year, in terms of, all right. One of the, one of the goals this year was for Addison, as they, it was, we move forward with having a sixth grade school next year, and then seventh and eighth, now becoming its own school, how is that all gonna be reconfigured? There's lots of things to be considered, I mean, the most obvious is space, and what kind of space they would need, where they would, they would move, but, but how does it change their image with, with mission, and what happens with schedule? There are a whole host of things that had to be considered. And what, what you were provided with is a, let's say, it's a, it's the report at, as of now. There's still a lot more work to be done, but they have taken this challenge quite seriously, and with a lot of enthusiasm. Right now, there are 20 faculty members who are on this reimagining Addison Committee. And there, there's a lot of decisions they have to make for next year, but there are also decisions and, that are, that are going to take place after, after these major decisions are done. So, in preparation for this, a, a number of the, of the faculty went and visited the Pollard School in Needham, just to see, just to learn a little bit more about, you know, some of the things they learned from the, when the sixth grade was separated from the seventh and eighth, what kinds of things to think about in this reimagining. And they learned a great deal from, from that, and, and I think that's gonna be an ongoing relationship for them as they move forward. So, there were a lot of, they did surveys, they've, they've done some outreach, they've done readings that Dr. Woods has provided for them, and they've, they've, so, so they're, they're preparing in terms of the kinds of things to think about. So, the first thing that was an easy task, was in some ways easy, I'm not sure it was that easy, but they had to think about a floor plan, because there was things that we needed to know, what would, what would need to change next year in terms of planning for any kind of capital changes. So for example, when the seventh grade is now gonna move over to the sixth grade wing, none of the sixth grade classrooms are equipped as science labs. So, they've had to think about where the science rooms are going to be, and in a way that is gonna make it the most efficient in terms of putting in the necessary sinks into the room that you would need for a science room. So that's the kind of work, and they've had to work with our facilities department on that, so we, so we know and can be, set aside the funds, well, Johnson here, he can talk more about that, set aside the funds, and, and the, and begin the planning for that kind of work. We also know that the lab program, which has been currently housed here for the last couple of years, the middle school lab program is going to move back to the middle school, so we're deciding where that program is going to be. We also know that the Millbrook program is going to move back, and, and there's certain considerations in terms of separate entrances, and same thing for, for the lab program, separate entrances, that need to be considered in, in the, in the placement. So there's been a lot of work around these kinds of issues, and I wouldn't say that it's a final floor plan that we have, but it's pretty close. It's final in terms, I, I think of the science rooms, if I'm not mistaken, because we have to figure out all the water and the plumbing that has to go into, into that. So the other issue, too, was what to do about Old Hall. We, it's not really called Old Hall over at the middle school, but like, the same concept, directed studies, because we are unable to necessarily have substitutes like we do at the elementary level, when students, when a teacher is out, so frequently, classes are moved to the, to the... when students, when a teacher is out. So frequently, classes are moved to the, to the cafeteria for directed studies. So I think part of the plan in when they moved the seventh and eighth grade was to have a room, a larger room that would be by, by grade level for these directed studies. But also, as you know, in the budget for next year, we've planned, we've planned to increase the number of staffing at Addison. So we can have four clusters at the seventh grade. And then we're going to have 3.5 at the eighth grade. But in the planning, had to make sure that when we roll this out, because the idea was the next year we would add to the eighth grade, that, that there would be space for the, the, the four clusters at the eighth grade as well. So I think they've done a really good job of planning this out at this point in terms of floor plans. There's been a few things like nurses' office and maybe a place for curriculum leaders. Curriculum leaders have no place to, to have an office over there. So the, so the nice thing is there's, there's room to do these things. But also, one thing I had said to them too is that when we, when we go forward with this renovation, we have to have some flexibility over there too. And that has to be part of the discussion because it might be, I'm not saying this would happen. We did talk about whether the lab program would move over there for the high school. Not sure that will happen. Would we have part of the preschool move over there? Would we have the daycare move over there? I mean, there's a lot of things we might have talked about that might move over there. And how would that fit into a master plan right now? Because that is so, we don't know at this point what that's going to look like. They're just going ahead with assuming that they have the programs that are coming back into the school and what was going to happen seventh and eighth. So that's taken actually a fair amount of discussion and planning. That's the, the concrete part. But then there's also, the, the, the middle school also wants to have a, 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 a social emotional program there that they all can have the same teacher language about. And as you know, the Gibbs program, the Gibbs School is going to have responsive classroom as it's, as it's one of its social emotional bases in the school. And, and all of the teachers that are going to be teaching there or is a specialist or even a social worker are going to go through the training. Right, this past year, Dr. Woods has provided all the faculty over there with one of the books for responsive classrooms, which, which is on teacher language. And there's been a lot of discussion about that. And I don't think they've decided quite yet. And they may not decide for another year exactly what social emotional program they would like to, to adopt for the, the seventh, eighth grade school. What they have decided for the time being is to keep the four day schedule and the seven period day. That however, is part of the discussion is looking forward into the future. The middle school, the Gibbs School is going to go to a trimester schedule, which is what we have at the elementary. And the question that the seventh, eighth will have is should they do the same thing? And should they change the number of periods they have? So a lot of the, they had to go through all the different programs in the school. I think that the one major change will be that we will have more of a computer science option, which is our digital media literacy program in the seventh, eighth grade next year. And it's, we've had it in the sixth grade and, and students and parents alike have requested that we have that continuum. And that has always been part of the plan anyway. So that is, that is going to be increased. But other than that, in terms of curriculum, nothing is changing next year at the seventh and eighth grade. There are still, one thing they did discuss this year was whether they would have recess like the middle, the sixth grade school is going to have. And the answer is no. But they are going to do mindfulness breaks during the course of the day. There, there's still a lot of discussion about what to do about backpacks. And that, those are things that are still going to be part. So you have a whole list here of things that they have made some decisions about, such as they're still going to have the three lunches. They are going to have more locker breaks than they've had in the past. And the other thing they're developing is a supportive discipline flow chart for safe and supportive schools. And that is a, that is not completed yet, but that is something that they're planning on doing. But you can see in the discussion, this discussion continues on in a number of things about directed study, about world language, advisory format. What, what's going to be in these mindfulness breaks, backpacks. And one of the things they also want to do, which has not happened yet, is do an inventory of all the instructional tools in each of the rooms. And I think that's something we're, we need to do because what's going to Gibbs, what's not, what's staying is all, that hasn't all completely been worked out yet. So there are a lot of concrete things they've had to deal with and also program and curriculum. This is not, they see themselves in a multi-year evolution. And Dr. Woods said she would be happy to come in maybe toward the end of the year and talk about where, where they are at that point.
Questions? Len?
So can you give us a little bit more detail about how that DML computer science class will work? I mean, currently in the seventh and eighth grade, they, they have directed study only if they don't take chorus or band. So they were able to in the eighth grade, take the trial computer science class if they didn't take orchestra or band. What's the concept that they're thinking about now?
Well, it's not definite yet, but the concept right now is to have it go through the entire day as an option. So it may be against something else that there would be a choice about. That, that is one of the limitations of staying with the, the schedule they have right now. There's just not a lot of flexibility in the schedule to accommodate another elective. So right now, that's the plan. There, there's enough FTEs to do that. It's not what the math department, computer science department had hoped to have happen. It means a change in a lot of the planning they've already done on a, on a seventh grade program. But at the same time, without a scheduled change, the curriculum has to be adapted and offering, given a different way.
So I'm sorry, it would be, it would be done during the other classes or?
There'd be a choice level. There would have to be some choices that would be made. But right now, as you described, the only choice would have been between the DML course and band, chorus, orchestra. And there was a lot of sentiment that that was not.
Right.
What, what a lot of people wanted. So I don't know the final plan yet. I've had a fairly detailed conversation with the director of math. And they're working, they were still working out, but I, I think that down the road, I'm sure that he'd be happy to come in and talk about that.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So I'm glad to see there's more locker breaks. Previous policy was draconian. I, I'm just curious how the three lunch periods work. I mean, is it, is one lunch period, seventh and eighth mixed? Or you know, how, that's, okay.
I think that's how it's going to be. Because right now, have they have the lunch periods? It's gone, they go out by class.
Right, right.
But this would definitely be a mix. So they would, but that's what they've decided. Now that could change as they really dig into this. They're just working on the schedule now with the hope to complete it in June sometime. It may be possible to still do that. But it's, at the moment, that's where it is.
And then I was wondering about eliminating homeroom, sort of what is the, the thinking behind? Is it just?
I think it's to have one less transition and to spread those minutes out a little bit.
Okay.
I think that's what it is. Because even though they have a five minute homeroom, you have another three minutes in transitions too. So I think that was the issue.
So that first class wouldn't be disadvantaged in terms of timing? You don't want that first class to be taken up with announcements, you know, not having this time or something?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I haven't seen the final bell schedule, so I couldn't tell you exactly how it's going to be redistributed. And if, if the lunches change, that could change things up a bit too.
Okay. Thanks.
I just wanted, I hope you can transmit to Dr. Woods our thanks for seeing this. I thought it was really interesting seeing all the work that's been done. And I went through all the different links and stuff that she gave us. And I felt like you could sense the energy that is going on there and the excitement. And it's, I mean, think about it, Addison and excitement and like, no, and something new. No, it's like, it's really cool. And I don't think that's come out in our discussion here. And I feel like we're kind of getting two new schools for the price of one renovation. And I just think that's really interesting. And I think it's going to be great for our students.
That's an excellent point. There is a lot of energy about this. There's a lot of excitement. And to the extent possible, bringing in the new principal as well as we get into the spring, that's already, those kind of discussions are in play. But they are, they're very excited about this. And they've also kind of realized they don't have to decide everything this year. It's going to evolve.
So I actually have a question. Could you summarize any capital improvements? The, the science lab is going to be retrofitted?
Yes, it's going to be a little bit of, well, actually, I don't know if John is prepared to talk about any of the capital changes. Well, the other one is the foyer.
Yeah.
And, and some painting. I mean, the foyer is just so bleak.
Yeah.
And just to brighten it up, because we want, we want them to also feel like physically the building is more updated. But it's going to take more than painting the foyer to do that down the road. I mean, it's just, there's a lot that has to be done. I don't know how many rooms we'll have. We painted a lot last summer. I don't know how many are in the painting schedule this year.
And then the retrofitting, the science lab retrofitting is, is that, how many left?
Well, you'd have to have four.
Four. So you're retrofitting all this summer. It's all going to?
Oh, it has to be done in the summer. Yes, it has to be done.
That's a capital.
That's.
Capital expenditure, not a town, not a school.
We're doing, we're taking down the, I think we're doing down the facilities budget. Right.
Oh, we are.
And one of the thoughts was to have them positioned, I mean, the original floor plan had the, you know, they thought they'd like to the science lab.
Yeah.
But you need to get them close enough together so you get the benefit of the same piping.
Yep.
So that's happening. I'm not quite sure where the final rooms are yet. But we know that this is, facilities has been working with Dr. Woods about getting this done.
Okay. It is a summer. Okay. A clarification. Very good. All right. We're not too far behind schedule. So the next item on the agenda is a letter that Dr. Bodie and Mr. Schlickman have been working on. Do you want to talk a little bit about this, Paul?
I have to give complete credit.
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. Very good.
Look, there are two things that are happening. First of all, you know, the Dover School Committee wrote to us. They're putting together something they're calling Project Parkland. And they want to send a communication with as many school boards and school committees as possible on the 100th day after the Parkland shooting to President Trump with an outline of the issues on their letter. And so they've asked us to adopt that. And the letter that's addressed to President Trump, the one that's a little terse, is the Parkland letter, Parkland Project Letter. And we would like to endorse their project to authorize them to use our name along with the other school boards and school committees that sign on to it.
The motion by Mr. Schlickman, second by Mr. Haner.
Sorry, the motion is just for this one?
Yeah, there are two separate.
I think you should do one at a time.
Two separate votes.
Just the.
Sorry, the Dover School Committee's.
The Dover, the Dover letter, Project Parkland. And.
So let's vote on that one. So any, any discussion on the Project Parkland letter?
So, so the idea, I wish there was more in it, but you're saying it's terse for a reason because.
Well, they wrote it terse and we can't edit their letter. So we, our choice is here is sign on to it and say, thank you very much. We're going to join, join you in this. And, and I think that's a good thing to do.
Tense sounds, it's a, it's a three, three bullet points.
Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Quick question. Do you need physical signatures or just printed? It's sufficient.
I, I think that we, if we, I think that all that's required out of that one is for us to notify them that we have signed on to the letter.
So I mean, I think once we adopt this, Karen, Karen will just notify Dover that we've signed the letter.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And so it's just, we're adding it. So I think we take a motion, take a vote on that. Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we're on to the letter that Paul drafted.
Okay, the second one is the letter that, at the last committee meeting that you directed me to collaborate with the superintendent to draft. So I ran a draft out and then shared it with the superintendent. And the derivation of the bullet points, I went to the website that rates states in terms of their gun policy. And they had various categories and actions that would result in an A rating. And what I did was looked at that and said, you know, that looks pretty reasonable. It's a reasonable set of things to rate. Massachusetts is an A minus, so we're pretty close. Nationally, we're allowing a lot of really awful things going. So that it would be an important thing for our federal legislators to hear that we want gun legislation throughout the nation that aligns with Massachusetts and California, which is the A state in this. Mass is an A minus. The deficiency in A mine, in Massachusetts, in their mind, are the extreme risk prevention order laws, which are before the legislature right now in Massachusetts. So that's how I got to the bullet points. And I wanted to this, to be both supportive of our students, who I'm really proud of for taking a huge initiative. I think that we need to have their backs. And to also tell our story as a community where we are. We were a site on the first day of the American Revolution where the British troops marched up Mass Ave to go after the arsenal that was owned by the town of Concord at the time. And that, that was the start of the war. And the founding fathers basically said, well, we don't want that to happen again. And that feeling was the source of the Second Amendment. We don't want the national army to come up Mass Ave and go after an individual town's weapons, be it the police department, the National Guard, or whatever organized militia there was. This was not intended to provide military weapons to individuals who can go and shoot up a school. So taking a teachable moment, putting some history into it, that's where I came with the prefix. So that's how I set it up here. And I hope that I have the support of the committee for the letter.
All right. So, yeah, Bill?
100% support, just some minor corrections. Second line, second paragraph, not commissioned constitution.
Okay, my copy here says the, the school committee views the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution.
Okay, the one I got said commissioned.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So you corrected that. Good.
And on, on the last line, either uppercase or lowercase for free state, just for agreement.
Okay.
That's it for me. I think it's well done. Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
I, I have some substantive things. Well, so for a bullet point, I'd love to add lifting the Dickens, Dickens Amendment, which is the amendment that prohibits federal dollars from being used to study gun deaths. That, I think that's an important.
Lifting the?
Dicky, Dicky Amendment.
Dicky, D-I-C-K-E-Y. Okay.
What does it say?
It's the amendment that was passed in the eighties that prohibits federal dollars from being used to study gun deaths. And so when people say, well, we don't have any statistics, the reason we don't have any statistics is that they've explicitly prohibited the federal government from funding that. And so only private money, which isn't as generous, you know, can collect that data and they don't have access to data. So it's, it's been a real problem.
I, I would, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. But I also have a not friendly thing. I'm not entirely comfortable with the first two paragraphs. And the reason I'm not is I'm a very strong believer in that the Constitution is a living document. And so that even when an interpretation seems to get the, that's an originalist interpretation gets the result that I want, to be consistent, I don't, you know, I, this is sort of reading into things in originalist intent of the Constitution, that, that we should look back and see what the forefathers thought before, and, and, and just sort of, and use that as, as a template for what we should, how we should interpret the Constitution. So, so in general, I'm not a big believer in that approach. And so I'm, I'm not that excited by those paragraphs.
Okay, wait. Real quick. I want to debate this for too long. Bill, go ahead.
I tended to agree with you. I spent an hour and a half this afternoon researching the Federalist and Anti-Federalist papers. This is exactly what they came to.
No, but that's the whole point. That's the whole point.
Let me just finish, please. And. And to get to your issue of living document, I would agree with it. It will require an amendment to do it. We've done that once before. The Eighteenth Amendment was the Volstead Act. The Twenty-Second Amendment killed it. It will require another amendment to get rid of this.
Get rid of.
In order, in order to change it in any way out of the Constitution, when you say it's a living document.
No, no. I'm, I'm saying is, so, so there's these originalists who say, "We have to interpret the Constitution exactly the way the founders interpreted it." And I don't believe in that.
Well.
And so, I think that the Constitution is a living document and that we reinterpret it over time. And that, so, so it's, it's less relevant what the originers thought.
Well, the courts are the interpreters of the.
Than what we think.
The courts are the interpreters, not us as an individual. We as individuals can go through our representatives and get an amendment change. That's the only way we can do it.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting, I'm, I'm just saying, in general, I take sides in, in the debate that goes on among the Supreme Court and among the public. And that, this sort of leads to a certain interpretation, so I'm not totally comfortable with it.
So, if you got rid of the first two.
I'd be fine getting rid of the first two.
Starting with, "The Arlington School Committee acknowledges."
Yes. That's. But as I said, I know it's not a friendly amendment.
Okay, Karen, see, we don't want to spend, I mean, we don't want to, we just want to get something out there. So, I don't, we got other things to do here.
I think it's very nice that it's written originally, I'm not deleting any paragraphs. I don't think it's worth changing. I think it brings it, it makes a local tie with the information and potentially makes it more interesting. And maybe they'll keep reading. So, I'm gonna, I'm hoping it stays as written, I mean, with the friendly amendment and about the Dicky Amendment, or Dick. But otherwise, I will be voting for it.
Lynn, you had your hand up?
Nope.
Oh, I thought you did. I'm sorry. I, go ahead. Paul, you want, you had, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say that I was not in any kind advocating for the interpretation of the Constitution, but I was providing historical context. I'm not a lawyer. I'm an educator.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure we're, I, I, I'm comfortable with Paul's written here. I think we're, otherwise, we're going to kill ourselves with this thing. That's, that's where I'm at. Lynn, you're a lawyer from, you went to, what do you, what do you got? What do you got on this? You want to, you want to give everyone a summary of the originalist.
I would prefer it started actually with the fourth paragraph. I don't think we should be interpreting the Second Amendment at all. We're not lawyers. We're a school committee. So, I would, I would remove all discussion of the Second Amendment and just start with, "We're concerned about Sandy Hook and Parkland." But I understand the, the attempt to bring some local color, and I'm not overly opposed to it. So, either way is fine.
I see, I mean, I see it as a, as a chance to bring, to bring local color to the whole thing. That's, that's just how I see it. Okay, folks, we have to vote on this and move on, but this is a good discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
So, it carries six to one. All right. Thank you very much. Good discussion. The only thing I want to say is, you know, this, the youth of America with, what, thirty-one hundred high schools walked out on the same day. You can't get, I taught, you know, ninth grade world history. I couldn't get thirty-one ninth graders to do world history assignment at the same time. So, you know, this is a movement that is, is kind of, they're way in front of us, and they're basically telling us that our generation couldn't get it done.
Yep.
And we screwed up and they're taking over. So, I kind of see it as, what can we do to help you guys out? We couldn't get it done in gun control. They probably can. So, we should support them. Okay. Now, we go to the superintendent's report. Not as exciting. Do you want to give any, any comments on the Constitution before you start?
No, I, I thought it was a great letter.
Okay, good.
It does have local color, for sure.
It does have local color, right. Okay, go ahead.
I, I just follow up on your comment. I, I have to say, I was very proud of our students today. They did an absolute terrific job of organizing it. And, and their, their comments were quite appropriate. And they worked so collaboratively with the administration and the Police Department. There were emails back and forth between the students and the police. And it was just, I can't say enough how well done it was. So, congratulations to them. I think what's on everybody's mind has been these snow days. You know, our, I want to thank DPW and also our custodians and our bus drivers because they were terrific in getting our schools ready. We were probably one of the last schools in this little area, you know, as we were getting close to that eighteen, twenty inch mark. But everyone tried so hard to see if we could have a delayed opening. But when that next, that last band of snow came in, that did it. They just couldn't do it. And as it turns out, we couldn't get the buses dug out until about eleven the next morning, which they had to have been dug out by eight or eight-thirty, even for delayed openings. So, but that brings us to the Monday, the last week of June, as the last day of school. And we still have impending storms in front of us. So, hopefully, there'll rain. That would be terrific. I'm very happy that it's March because even in twenty-four hours, the snow packs have come down at the corners. When I was first driving around, they were just huge. That's getting better. So, that part is fine, but unfortunately, we had to go across into that next week. We have, we've had discussions at this table earlier about distance learning as a substitute. And what I can say to you is that there's been a lot of discussion about this with the unions. And there are a lot of complexities to this that have a lot to be worked out. I think the assignments are probably the easier of the two. And nobody ever envisioned this also as something that was substitute for all snow days, which is really is a opportunity perhaps not to have this happen. But there's just too many things still to be worked out. We will continue to have discussions with the union about it, and we'll see where that Part of our negotiations is we have a calendar committee, and there's going to be another survey that's going to be put out to parents and to teachers this spring. Because you would like to have a two-year calendar for start date to be voted next year, probably in January, if not early December. So, the committee would like to get that, that to you so that you could do that. So, the committee is going to be looking at start dates. So, would teachers potentially start earlier than Labor Day? Because the towns that are not having the same pressure that we have on this do do that. So, that's part of the discussion that'll be in this negotiation. But actually, teachers were more inclined to that than parents were the last survey. So, that's one of the reasons why we're going to get the survey out. You shaking your head?
That's how I remember it. Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, there were, there was, there was strong feelings on both sides. So, I think we're going to get another survey out. Then this is also the issue of start time for the high school and possibly the middle school. So, that will also be considered as well. But meanwhile, right now, that's where we are. And Mr. Haner had asked before the meeting, "What's the rules at the Department of Education?" The rules are that you don't have to add extra days on if you've hit your five by April first. We're at our five, and the storm is next week. So, there we are.
And we go up to June thirtieth before we can.
Yes.
We can have a sixth day. We can have a seventh day.
We can only go to June thirtieth.
So, we technically have four more snow days before April first.
We don't have to make up anything after April first.
After April one.
After April one. Yeah, but, yeah, okay.
Great. They need to.
Motion to postpone next week's storm until April.
Are they considering postponing MCAS?
Are they? They being Department of Education?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything. And you're right, because there's some towns, some cities that have had.
Falmouth didn't have school again today.
That's right.
Falmouth is still without power. I mean, a lot of places have had way more snow days than we have. I mean, Lexington had two the last time. We only had one.
Yeah.
Chompsford is up to June thirtieth already.
Yeah, I mean, some places are.
Yeah, maxed out.
We've had a pretty bad year, and they have in the past allowed for another week. They've allowed it to be pushed.
Lowell has had ten.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they, well, let's, we're waiting for the state that they, you know, let's see.
Panic in River City.
The superintendents that are, right, you guys.
Oh, but I'm saying that we should push them. Somebody should force that question. I mean, they're not going to do anything if we don't ask or say anything, right?
Well, the purpose of having longer, longer times so we wouldn't, we haven't started yet, but we're starting soon.
Right.
No, but keeping the MCAS dates, adding dates in June does nothing.
Oh.
MCAS is the deadline. By May, when, May tenth, when we give MCAS in Lexington, I have to have met all of the sixth grade curriculum.
I see what you're saying.
After that.
Yeah.
Right.
Add more days in June. Go ahead. I'm going to have them fly paper airplanes. I mean, I don't know what to do with them anymore, right?
As a teacher, you know that once we do MCAS, that people feel like the year, school year is over.
Well, I mean, certainly for those for which the test has a deadline date.
We have heard nothing yet. But I, but I think certainly the towns like Andover or Lowell, Falmouth, they really probably have already had some requests in about this. But certainly, I'll let you know as soon as I hear.
I mean, I think as soon as you've had a week of snow days, that's a week of.
That's a week.
That's a week of school that has been missed. And that is necessary in order to prepare them.
And when you have those interruptions, you lose momentum.
Yes, that's the real problem.
It's not like you're just picking up the next day and starting. That's right.
When they put those in, there was no thought of having the MCAS and other things involved to have curriculum. The curriculum was supposed to be finished in June, not prior to a statewide achievement test. I'm supporting what you're saying here. The end of the curriculum for anyone taking the MCAS is walking into the MCAS test.
Right.
So, okay, why don't we just ask you to report back?
I will, I will report up. I usually do building updates. I mean, this is going to be really staccato. Hardy is going to start on time sometime this month, but snow, well, I think it'll be fine to start. Gibbs is on schedule. I was by there today. It's really starting to look pretty good. The windows look great. And the high school, well, we've already had the discussion tonight. We're moving, moving that along. Last thing I just want to mention is, as Dr. Wood says, exciting news to share. This just happened this week, that she was notified of an invitation from the National Academic Quiz Tournament that combined seventh and eighth grade teams from Odysseum to represent Massachusetts in the national competition in Chicago in this May. They extended the invitation based on the strong showing of both the seventh and eighth grade Odysseum teams at the New England Invitational last weekend, and the high individual scores of the top players from both teams that competed. So, this is the only team from Massachusetts that's going to the Nationals.
Wow.
Yeah, that's terrific.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's wonderful. That's it.
All right. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, March one, two thousand and eighteen, warrant number one eight, one seven five, in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. Approval of minutes, February eighth, two thousand and eighteen, and March first, two thousand and eighteen, school committee regular meeting minutes, and March one, two thousand and eighteen, FY nineteen, public hearing on budget.
So, move.
No, 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 no tripos. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Haner, second by Dr. Seuss. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Subcommittee liaison reports. Budget.
Budget was canceled last week because of snow, and we have not yet rescheduled. And I'm not sure if we're going to. I'm going to talk with Mr. Denizio and see what we need to do.
Community relations.
Nothing to report.
District accountability.
We were accountable for twenty-one inches of snow.
All right. Good job.
Facilities. Policies and procedures. Nothing. But on budget, when are we going to the Finance Committee?
Wednesday, the twenty-first.
Okay. So, that's before our next meeting. So, if anybody else is interested. Wednesday, March twenty-first.
At the police station?
Finance Committee, what, and what time?
Seven thirty.
Okay. Karen will send out, did you send out a notice already?
No. Not on my calendar.
Question, Lynn.
Yeah, question.
Can you give us a rough date of when we're going to be looking at policies to approve from that?
Okay.
I'm just nervous of getting a big chunk all of a sudden trying to digest them.
Give us notice.
Oh, yeah.
If you could parse them out, I mean, thank you.
School enrollment task for it, not necessarily, nothing to report. Legal services.
Other than what we approved tonight?
We approved everything tonight. Gibbs Committee liaison reports. Any liaison? Yep.
Couple. School, school committee chat, Jeff and I attended. We had one gentleman, that's all that came to us. It was, it was a good talk. Talked about increasing after-school daycare, willing to work on any subcommittees or anything to go for it. I thought it was very enlightening.
Yeah, it was, not after-school daycare. It was after-school, yeah.
I'm sorry.
After-school programs for all children.
Yeah, thank you.
And his position was is that the way we do it now, in which every, there's separate programs that are privately run, may not allow for every parent who wants to have after-school programming for their children to have it.
Yes, that's true. They all have wait lists.
They all have wait lists. Not all, not all. Many do. So, he felt that we should look into that. And so, we said we'd bring it to the committee. Go ahead.
On EDCO, open discussion, school committee having a Facebook. One of the members has a detailed, she didn't outline on it. I'd be glad to share. I mean, your representative to this meeting was a strong Luddite. I have no idea what to do, but I'll be happy to share that. Send me an email and I'll, I'll give you the documents. Three or four pages, and they're very active. And it looked interesting. I wouldn't know what the heck to do with it. And PTBC and Stratton PTO were canceled because of him, so.
So, just on the, on the point about the, you know, I did say that we'd bring it to the committee. We had an email exchange, and if there was any subcommittee that thought they should take up this issue, they were welcome to do this. Just historically.
What issue?
The after-school program.
Oh, after-school, okay.
So, we looked into this as a committee, I don't know, a long time ago, and it was.
Facilities.
Yeah, it was a lot of things. But, I mean, you know, I, I mean, I.
Okay, can I, so, I want to ask the question without trying to imply anything, but does it come under our purview? And.
Yeah, it does.
Does it? Okay.
It definitely did. Yeah, you can't really punt this. You really can't.
I'm, I'm not trying to punt it. I'm, I'm asking because our, my understanding is what we're supposed to be doing is making sure that our students get an education, and this is beyond that. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I think we can choose to take it up, but it's just, it's separate from what our main focus is. And, and as this has come up, I've been wondering, you know, is this something the school should be doing? Is it something the school committee should be doing? Or, you know, where does it?
So, Lynn had his hand up. Go ahead, Lynn.
Yes, I mean, we set the policies on how our facilities are used. We don't really have a policy that addresses how they're used by after-school programs. We have sort of a mishmash in history and, you know, two, two programs are now run by the school district. We don't have a policy that says the school district should run two programs. It just happened. It was talked about, but with no, no revote that we should do that. There are other programs that have been in place, you know, without RFPs or anything for years and years. So, it's definitely a mishmash, and it's definitely something that we, we can have a policy discussion about in policies and procedures. Or my recommendation would actually, if, if, you know, if there's an appetite to look at this issue, that there actually be a, a special committee set up to do it with, with representatives from the existing programs, with the principals that have to share the with representatives from the existing programs, with the principals that have to share the space, with some parents who are willing to look at how other towns do this, because it's a problem in other towns, and in some towns it's not a problem. So there's a lot of data gathering that needs to be done, a lot of work that would need to go into looking at this issue.
Yes. That summarizes it well. And we have had history of this. We did do this maybe a decade, I don't know, a long time ago. And it was all that, very complicated. But we took it on because it impacted children and parents and the facilities that we're responsible for, as you articulated. Go ahead.
It was either last year or the year before, we had representatives from this committee to look at costs to parents and things of that nature. I remember the different members, different representatives of the after-school programs coming and talking to us and trying to adjust that and bring in some, I don't know, parity. So we, as Lynn said, we've had our fingers in it, it may not be clear, and that may require some...
But that was only because we were raising the, we were changing the fee structure for renting the space in the schools.
I understand. What I'm saying is, we've had our fingers in it, to what extent, and...
Yeah, I mean, so I, you know, I would say, you know, there's different ways to go about it. There could be a motion to set up a committee. We're at the end of the term here, though, so I think it's, I think it's more of an issue for the new chair. I mean, I really do, because it's just, it's March 15th. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we can just, we can't really establish a committee that would expire on three weeks.
Didn't you tell them, "Don't punt"?
Yeah, no. Yeah, I have been through this before, and it is a, it is a very complicated issue.
You know, lots and lots of people.
Yeah.
Very complicated.
Yes, it was, it's a complicated issue. I mean, he raised a very important point that, you know, you have to consider. Okay.
Liaison Report. I did finally go to my assigned school, Hardy, last week, just cutting it in on the wire. Not a procrastinator at all. We had a good discussion about all the building projects, about the budget, even though it wasn't an assigned budget meeting. They actually had a really good turnout for their PTO. Usually I see, you know, between five and 10 people, but they were about 15 or 20, so there wasn't a whole lot of input. People were thrilled about the kindergarten TAs, and we're glad with the overall situation with the Gibbs being fully funded.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So, do we have an executive session?
We're, I don't know, because we had to cancel negotiations.
Yes, so no executive session, so we are ahead of schedule.
Well, we can talk more.
No, no. I know, but, no, I know, yeah, I know. No, it says 9:20 in German, so I'm 15 minutes... Okay. And a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We have...
Announcements?
Announcements and...
Oh, yes, announcements, sure, of course.
And agenda items, I both.
Go ahead, sure.
Agenda item, I'd like to request that we get an update on the new plans for the middle school history curriculum at some point.
The middle school?
History curriculum, that there's, yeah, because I know there's a lot of changes coming, and it'd just be nice for the committee to hear those. For announcements, I'd like to announce that Arlington High School is going to perform Wonderful Town on March 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Hopefully, that will be on the school calendar at some point soon. And it's in honor of Leonard Bernstein's 100th birthday.
Very exciting, yeah, thank you for that.
We're here to be alive.
Lynn, so another agenda item. We had, I was going to discuss the budget, but since it's unclear if we're going to have a budget meeting, we had discussed about having a plan come before us on funding the Gibbs Library. So out of the reserve funds, I do believe that's something we should vote on, you know, sooner rather than later.
Can we do that next week?
Yeah, we have actually a plan going forward. We can do it the next time. And also, probably more information on that if we wait another meeting. As far, can I mention something about the curriculum?
Yes, go ahead.
I think the plan is not to change anything for next year.
Right, no, I know that.
Oh, okay. So do you want to do it next year, or are you thinking about, because I think they're going to do some planning of this.
There's a lot of buzz going on right now, so it'd be interesting for the committee to sort of be updated on what's going on. But, I mean, obviously, we'd love to have Denny Conklin, it depends on when, and he's available, and so...
So, I mean, yeah.
He's on paternity leave right now, so, probably later in the spring.
Okay, yeah. Just put it on the list.
Yep.
Okay, but, I mean, for next week, we could actually, we could have a presentation on the Gibbs Library.
The Gibbs Library, sure.
Yeah, for next week, we can do that. All right. Motion, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.